Good evening, everyone. We're going to call the City Council for the City of India to order with our Indian Water Authority or Indian Finance Authority. Uh, we're calling at five oh five. Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Gudron.
Present.
Councilmember Ortiz.
Present.
Councilmember Farman.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tim Holmes.
Present.
Mayor Miller.
Present. This time, if you could all rise, we have invocation by Pastor Tony Williams of the Love of Christ Community Church.
Let us pray. Dear Father, Lord, we just want to bless you, Lord, on this evening, Lord. Just giving you thanks and acknowledging that you are great. And, Lord, we just ask that in these meetings, in these times, and in these times, there's not meetings that you give us governance, that you give us wisdom, that you give us vision, that you give every person who makes a decision discernment on how to move. And, Lord, we ask you to keep our children safe, to keep our, our first responders safe, keep our law enforcement safe, keep everyone that works in hospitals safe, and our children while they're at school. And, Lord, we just thank you, Lord, that you've given us a great city, a city that we're proud of, a city that we're happy to be a part of. And, Lord, let us not forget the least of them. Let us not forget the ones who might be down and out, the ones who might not have a voice that they can speak with. Let's speak for them. And, Lord, let's be careful in all that we do to give you honor, give you praise, and give you glory, because we understand we own nothing, but you've allowed us to steward. You've allowed us to manage. And, Lord, let us manage with the right heart, with the right intent, and with the right mindset. And we thank you in Jesus's name. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor William.
Sir.
Now, we have a very special person, Sharaya Ortiz Rosco, excuse me, from Jackson Elementary School, who's coming up to do the Pledge of Allegiance for us. Come on up, Mom. Bring her up. Come on up. Her name means God is my friend in song. She is a kind-hearted and loving fourth grader who dreams of performing on stage one day. She's actively involved in her local church and enjoys singing, dancing, and practicing gymnastics. She also participates in her school's Spanish program, which helps her connect with and assist both English and Spanish speakers. Young lady? Come on up. Come on.
Here, put your hand on your chest. You ready? Come on. Ready? Put your hand on your chest.
Put your hand on your chest. You got this.
Come on, you got it. Okay, aw, Sharaya, come on. Remember? Aw, Sharaya, remember? Ready?
You've got this. Mom, Dad?
Yeah.
Come on, all of you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Come on, you're fine.
She's beautiful. She did a great job.
What's her name?
Sharaya.
Sharaya. You know, when you're born and you're not crying, the doctor makes you cry a little bit so you can breathe air into your lungs and life. So that's the first emotion you learn. So crying is okay. We all cry, okay? All right.
You did a great job. I think we all done it. Uh, City Attorney report on closed sessions.
Thank you, Mayor. There's no reportable action tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Graham. With that, we're going to move on to presentations. Five point one, a certificate of remembrance for Chris Silva from October 5th, nineteen forty-four to August 27th, twenty twenty-five. Is the family here? I know we reached out to the family. Um, and I'll let both Wayman and Ben speak. Wayman, you can talk about why we're doing this and what the reason you thought about this. And then Ben, you can talk about Mr. Silva. I know you knew him well.
I, um, thank you. First of all, I want to thank our, our city staff for working on this, uh, effort. Um, this is something that after seven years on, on this dais, um, we always recognize folks who have passed away. And, uh, it's all, it's, it's a, it's a good thing as well. It's a home-going, right? We're celebrating their life. And as I sit up here today in Breast Cancer Awareness Month, I wear this ribbon for my mother who, who went home because, uh, from breast cancer. And it was an idea that I thought of, how can we as a city honor people in our community who pass? We have a lot of pioneers, trailblazers in our community that I think it would be, I thought it would be a great idea for the city to recognize them. So I got with the city manager, the council, and, and staff to say, why don't we do this out of the mayor's office? That's a mayor could honor that family member. So that's how, um, I came across this. So I just thank the council and, and staff for working on this. And I think this is going to be another great Indian tradition.
Yeah. And, uh, thank you, Wayman. And, and Mr. Silva was one of our council members, but this isn't for just council members. That is for all our residents, anybody that lives in the city of India that would like to be recognized or have their family recognized. But, Mr. Gudron, can you talk about Mr. Silva?
Yeah, I mean, obviously, we all know people in the community, and some of us, we've been fortunate to be born and raised in this end of the community. And so unfortunately, I ran into, uh, former council member and mayor Chris Silva's family, one being his son David. And he told me I was downtown, and he approached me to tell you, Ben, my dad passed away. I go, when? And apparently, he had passed away in August. Um, don't know what complications that was his passing, but I thought it was appropriate. I brought it to the mayor, members of council, and then obviously, council member Wayman had come up with the certificate. But he was a local business owner of Silva's Radiator. Uh, he was involved on our playing commission. That's when inspired him to continue and have the opportunity to run for city council. During his term as council member, he did his best like all council members try to do, giving back to the community. He was real proud. He was also a United States Marine Corps veteran from Vietnam. Um, so he served his country. And, uh, he was always involved. He was involved in several organizations and committed to his community and raised his family in India. So, um, I guess for now, in, in respects to the family, we honor him and appreciate his efforts. And anybody from the community, obviously, has made a significant effort, but everybody in this community is important to us. But it's just, just a piece of respect. That's what we're trying to do. And, uh, I'm assuming the family will appreciate. And along with that, uh, the family was unaware that our military banner program is available to all veterans that live in India. And so that has grown with tremendous effort. So we are going to be assisting the family to make sure that Chris Silva is also recognized as one of our veterans.
Let's see if we can, what we can do about meeting up with his family and giving them the certificate of recognition, a memoriam, uh, to him in memory of his service and for his dedication to this community in multiple ways. John, could, do you have the certificate there? If maybe you could show that to everyone? This is what we would be presenting to anyone that asks us for that. And, um, so we're honored to be able to do this. So thank you, John. So with that, we'll move on to item number five point two. Now, it's a presentation regarding the Indian Chamber of Commerce by Mr. Dick Shalub. Mr. Shalub, come up to the podium and, uh, welcome, my friend.
Thank you, thank you, uh, Mayor, members of the city council. Um, I'm new at this.
Okay.
But here we go. Uh, first piece, I need to apologize. You know, the deck was not done in the city of India. The deck was done in the city of Palm Springs, and they misspelled my name. But that's okay. Uh, we're here today to talk about the formation of the new Indian Chamber of Commerce. And as we go through this, it's important to realize that we're talking about rebuilding, reconnecting, and reinvigorating the business community here in India. And taking a look at what we have here, we want to serve as the voice of the businesses in India. We want to build the bridges between business and education and government. And also, and also, and probably most importantly, understanding and combining the great tradition and history and heritage that India has enjoyed for a long, long time. And it's important to realize that, you know, the city was incorporated in nineteen thirty. Nineteen, ninety-five years ago, the city was incorporated. That's amazing. I don't think there's another city in the Coachella Valley that enjoys that. We still want to promote the economic growth and more local investment, and we can do that. We have the expertise. We have the ability to do it. We want to strengthen the community with identity and especially a lot of pride, because we're the largest city in the Coachella Valley. Three thousand business licenses. Three thousand business licenses in this city. Amazing. So as we go through this, and we're going to continue to do it, we want to create a dynamic, inclusive, future-focused Chamber of Commerce that champions local businesses and enhances India's economic vitality. Probably the most important two words in that statement are the, uh, the second and third adjectives in front of Chamber of Commerce. It's inclusive. It's not exclusive. It will build on small business, medium-sized businesses, and large businesses, regardless of profession, regardless of occupation, all-inclusive. Very, very important. We don't want to exclude anybody. The more folks we have around the table, the more great influences we can have. We have a, a couple of letters of support that, uh, they're in your packet. I'm not going to read the letters, but they're both from major contributors to the economy here in India, the auto industry, our auto dealers. One, excuse me, one is from Jason Chavez, and the other is from Trevor Theo. Two large dealerships, second generation here in the, uh, Coachella Valley, all, all enthused about the new Chamber of Commerce. And I know you have copies of the letters, and, and if you have any questions on those, I would encourage you not to ask me. Ask them. So the foundations for our success, building on the chamber's foundation, you know, updating governance policies and financial structure. Now, that's very strong, but let's take a step back. When we, uh, a group of us became a little dissatisfied with what we saw going on, we decided to do a little digging. And, uh, we hired a, an attorney and let him get his shovel out to see what he could find out. Turns out that the Chamber of Commerce that really is no longer in existence was in default, and its license suspended by the state. So, uh, a group of us put funds together. We, uh, took care of the delinquencies, got it all back where it should be, and then we started going over bylaws and what it really had at the time. That, that charter, I believe, was in the mid-forties when it started, and it really had a lot of holes in it. Our decision was to go to square one, start it all again. So we formed a new Chamber of Commerce, five oh one C, and began the process, all at our expense. The, uh, existing or non-existing chamber, uh, is just sitting up there. And, uh, anyway, they have another year to go before they'll be in a deficit again. So taking a look back at engaging the business community, reconnecting with past members, and launching membership drive and tiered benefits. Once again, three thousand members. How do we get them involved in the city? How do we get them involved in developing the future of India? Very, very important. Building a visible visibility and impact, refreshing the Chamber brand, creating signature programs, and strengthening partnerships. Well, how you do that? Well, now, because of, of AI and all the other improvements that have gone on, we've been able to set up social media programs that could really enhance the whole business environment. For example, on Fiftieth and Monroe, there's a center going in. In that center, there's an In-N-Out, and I think there is a Raising Cain, and others coming in. But there's a guy, and his name is Jeffrey Lutick. Jeffrey Lutick has a wonderful history, uh, as a Napa chef, as a Napa restaurant manager, general manager. And if you've ever heard of Iron Chef Maury Moto, he ran all of his restaurants. Well, Jeffrey retired and got bored, not because he lived out here, he just got bored. So he started a restaurant called Sumo Dog. Great restaurant, a super hot dog, super size, super ingredients, and he put one up. Then he put another one up. Then he's in, uh, a few stadiums, and now he's in AccuSure. He's got a store in, uh, in La Quinta on Fiftieth and Jefferson, so his new store. So when we bring Jeffrey in, we have our social media folks, whether it's JNS or Kitty in a Box, or whatever the, the system is that we use, let him drool down his chin with his own chili dog and talk to his customers. And that's what we can offer. If you want to see how that works, I'll go back a little ways, go to McDonald's in Coachella Valley and watch my kids dip their french fries. It's, it's fun, and it's effective. Hiring a new CEO. Well, we have, uh, interviewed several folks already. Uh, I participated in two of the four interviews, and we found some exciting, young, innovative people that know how to run membership organizations, and they have the ability to understand economic and, and city development. Uh, one of them lives here in the Coachella Valley and is very successful at, at this time. Working for India, you know, partnering with COD, the city, local organizations will provide fuel for success. What's that mean? Well, not only do we have COD, but we have Cal State San Bernardino's Center for Entrepreneurship, and they're with us. And what does that mean? Well, let's take an example again. If COD continues to add to their course curriculum more auto mechanic training programs, they can set up a program that gives certificates for graduation in auto mechanics. That serves as an entry level to the auto dealers who are looking for what? Mechanics for their cars. It's not like when we were kids, you grabbed a wrench and changed your spark plugs, played with your distributor, and your car ran. It doesn't work that way anymore. Nowadays, you have to have a pretty decent understanding of your computer systems, and that's taught at COD now. That program is in existence now with the dealers in Cathedral City, and it can be expanded here for our residents without any, any issues at all. In other words, in other words, we can raise the economic level, the salary levels of those who go to school here. They can stay here, and they can raise their families here. Fosterings and hosting business roundtables and community engagements and events. And this is where the combination of large businesses and small businesses can get together, discuss issues on both sides, and try to divine some kind of a solution to move forward the right way, understanding the right problems to solve and how to get there. Very, very important as the chamber develops. Visionaries partners. Well, special recognition goes to our visionary partners. Those are the, the folks that have written the initial checks to get this thing going, and they have a great ability, a great ability to bring different pieces to the, to the table, to make it more successful. And they're going to have a special part of the, uh, beginning Chamber of Commerce. Remember, the Chamber of Commerce is going to have an inclusive board, small, medium, large profit, nonprofit, all representing the city's businesses. Input on chamber programs and work, uh, workforce initiatives are going to be crucial. The workforce initiatives are what's going to continue to let the workforce grow within the city. What are we, ninety-six thousand people right now?
Plus.
Plus? Uh, I haven't seen the daily birth report, but I'm pretty sure we're getting up there. So you think in what, a year, year and a half, hundred thousand? Hundred and five thousand? Where are we going to be when we celebrate a hundred years? Hundred and twenty thousand? Thirty square miles of city. Hundred-plus-thousand in population. The business has got to grow and prosper. So we're building on the future of India. We invite the city council, the community partners, to join us on this new venture. Together, we'll make the Indian Chamber not only a cornerstone, but the cornerstone of economic reality, collaboration, and community pride. So thank you all for the time for the presentation, and if you have any questions, I'm allowed another minute and a half, so.
Really? Of course. Uh, thank you, Dick, for the presentation and all you do. And, and just, Dick, don't go. We might have some questions, but, uh, just so you know, Sumo Dog, both those are in India.
Good. I'll mention that to Jeffrey.
La Quinta wishes it was in La Quinta.
Now, actually, he's very, very happy where he is.
Yes, he is.
His new site, from what he's told me, he's really looking forward to this being a prototype for his next five, uh, restaurants. He's a good guy.
Any questions?
How many members did you say you currently have?
Do we currently have?
Yeah.
Well, uh, since we're not really in existence yet, I would say we probably have twelve.
Okay. And then, uh, how much money have you raised so far for this?
Uh, we're, we're touching thirty thousand dollars of our own contributions.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for the presentation, by the way.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dick.
Anybody else?
Wayman?
Yeah, one question. Yeah. What is your, what is the mission and goal, uh, for India in your vision? How, I mean, you, you did a great presentation, so I appreciate that, but as far as the city's growth and our business growth, what is the, the ultimate outcome of your mission for our businesses?
What, as, as I see the city of India now, and I've been here a lot of years, I've seen the city grow and grow and grow. But now, with the advent of the new initiatives coming down, plus what's going on in the airport in Palm Springs, what could happen at Jackie Cochran in Coachella? You have a whole base that could continue to grow in terms of tourism, in terms of festivals, in terms of all the, the, the good pieces that are in place already. Just take, for example, the festivals that the city puts on. If we could increase that by twenty percent, the attendance by twenty percent, if we could upgrade the quality of the festivals, as they should be, as they were eight, nine, ten years ago. Example, Southwest Arts Festival. We don't need to go through that. We know what it is, right? That's just one example. You increase that, you're going to double the attendance. You're going to double the reputation of what fine arts are to the city of India, and that's what happens.
I appreciate it. Other thing is too, maybe working with the city manager, I love to hear from some of the businesses that are, are, you're already working with, to hear their testimony, maybe at a meeting or something.
Can we do it at a different time?
Oh, no, a different time, absolutely, but, um, I'd love to hear their perspective.
Well, I think Rod, Rod's over here. You want to step up for a second, Rod? I know he hates speaking in public.
I mean, I'm, I'm happy to meet offline. That's fine, too. Uh, I think I know that guy, but, uh...
Just think of things in a little box.
Because I, there's a lot of folks here, and so I think it's important for us to hear their testimony as well. They're more than happy to stay for, uh, public comment as well. So thank you for your presentation. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
So, thank you. So with that, we'll move on to item number six, which is the... So with that, we'll move on to item number six, which is the Youth Advisory Council. And the floor is yours.
Good evening, Mayor Miller, city council members, and all attendees. My name's Yaretim Baghania. Since our last city council meeting, Yak attended National Night Out last Tuesday, where we encouraged families and young ones to sign up for the Indio Teen Center, hosted beanbag toss and potato sack races, and handed out treat bags to participants. Also enjoyed performances by the Shadow Hills and Indio High School's dance and marching band teams, and had the opportunity to connect with community members and explore local organizations of the city. That concludes my report, thank you.
Thank you. And would you like to stay for the rest of the meeting, or would you like to be excused?
I'll stay.
Okay, thank you. With that, we'll move on to item number seven, now, which is city manager report. Mr. Montgomery?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of things before I cede a little bit of time, as you see stated on the agenda, and also Chief Toley has a brief presentation. But mentioned was the National Night Out, I'm sure the council members will touch on that, but wanted to thank the community for the huge support and the team at the police department and the rest of the city staff that helped make that happen, and the success and support of the Concert Series event that was held on Saturday. Our second Saturday concerts continue to grow, a huge event. The continued support for Food Truck Fridays, we're bringing in more tables, and as the weather continues to cool, it'll even grow more. The farmer's market is set to begin near the end of this month as well, so we'll get a date published soon on that, and just continue to see the growth and development of the downtown. I do want to introduce from our engineering team, Don Uweno, talking about the Shadow Walk project, and the mayor and I have talked about how it might be good to have a presentation, there's been some discussion on this project, and Don was the project manager and brought that to completion. Following Don's remarks, Mayor, if you're okay, Chief Toley just has a real brief presentation as well.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Don?
Thanks, Tony.
Thank you, Pastor. All right, good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, city council members. My name is Don Uweno, I'm your principal civil engineer, and I'm in charge of your capital improvement projects. As the city manager said, giving you an update on our Shadow Walk public art installation. I'm sure you've all read the comments, you've heard people talk about Shadow Walk, and, you know, I just wanted to share a brief story with you. When I was a younger engineer, one of my, doing installations of public arts in other cities, one of my mentors that I really admired, he kind of explained, like, I told him, I don't get it, you know, some of these installations. And he says, you know, it's not for you to get, but one of the goals of public art that I remember, you know, there's many goals for public art, but the one that I took away was that public art actually is meant to spark conversations. And, you know, when we, you know, maybe you've driven through this corridor to go to the DMV, or you kind of just sped through it, going from 111 to the freeway, but you've never stopped to think about what's going on in this particular corridor. And as you know, this corridor is often, you know, underserved, it has, you know, just kind of stuck between the railroad tracks and the freeway. And then this art piece comes in, and now everybody's talking about it, right? And so I have a short presentation, and I do have the artists online who's going to speak to their piece of it. They're actually joining us from the East Coast, so we'll be really brief. So what is Shadow Walk? Shadow Walk is a public art and beautification project that the city of Indio actually got a grant from Caltrans, and they have a Clean California Local Grant Program. And basically, this area between Kenner Avenue and Avenue 45 on Jackson Street was kind of targeted to make it something, you know, to install something more vibrant and kind of have some different design elements on it. So about the Clean California Grant Program, really quickly, the city did receive four-point-five million dollars in state funds from Caltrans for this project. Some of the goals of Clean California's grant program is to reduce litter and waste, to create inviting and walkable spaces, also to invest in underserved communities, and lastly, to beautify corridors and public spaces through enhancements like public art. Specifically for us, the local grant paid for, actually, it's over a million dollars, that's an old number, eight-hundred-and-sixty thousand dollars for sidewalks, closing sidewalk gaps, making corner ramps, ADA compliant. There was also some utility relocations that were not into that dollar figure. It also paid for community-based events, like tree planting for Arbor Day and cleanup events that you've seen through our Indio Lindo program. This program also had a litter reduction poster contest. There were three categories for the elementary, the middle school, and the high school levels. Students who won, we actually turned their posters into ads and bus shelters, basically giving tips on how to reduce litter throughout the city. And then we did buy Big Belly Trash Bins for the corridors, so you should see that already installed on Jackson Street. So moving on to the public art process, I think the actual shelters accounted for about two-point-six million dollars of that four-point-five-million-dollar grant. And basically, in August of 2022, the Public Art Commission did put out an RFP to accept proposals for the shade art project that should be on Jackson Street. And we received two proposals through that process. Each proposal was reviewed by staff and the commission, focusing on the feasibility of the project, the artistic quality of it, and then the long-term maintenance of it. So after all that process was done, the city and the commission did select Walchek and Heis, and they're a civic arts design collaborative to produce this art piece. And just a little bit about Walchek and Heis, they are, they have about fifteen years of experience doing interactive, site-specific public art. They have installations in Denver, Chico, California, Laramie, Wyoming, and Wayne, Nebraska. Merrick Walchek, he is actually an acclaimed architect, and he even has some works in the Museum of Modern Art and the Walker Art Center. Wes Heis, he's an associate professor at Lehigh University. His background is industrial design. He has extensive CAD experience as well as sculpture, public sculpture experience. So that's kind of the, you know, the caliber of artists that we've selected for this art piece. I think now I'm going to turn it over to our artists. I don't know if you can hear me, but I wanted them to speak. Okay.
We're here, can you hear us?
More about the community aspect of it and their experience working on the piece. So, if you want to go ahead.
Can you introduce yourself?
Hi, I'm Merrick Walchek, I'm part of Walchek and Heis.
And I'm Wes Heis, I'm the other half of Walchek and Heis.
Could you speak up a little, sir, maybe closer to the mic?
I'm Wes Heis, can you hear me?
Yes. Just a little louder.
Yes.
Okay, great. Thanks, thanks for having us. Just a little bit about our process, I guess, and how we approach this piece. We make work that's informed by and responsive to local stories, sites, nature, and people. For Shadow Walk, our first idea was to design a shade structure with peaks and valleys, like the surrounding mountains around Indio. We wanted to make it modular to keep costs down, but we also wanted it to not look like a repeating system, so it felt new and different in all the way down the street, read differently. Can you go to the next slide? Great. Our next idea was about Indio's agricultural history with date palms, and we noticed that palm trees don't give the best shade from the sun, and maybe we could make a piece that turned palms into a better source of shade. So there's some photos we took in Indio. If you can go to the next slide. And our last idea was to find a way to involve the community in the design of the piece. In this case, we invited students at Indio, Shadow Hills, and Amsted High Schools to make drawings of palm trees and fronds around Indio. We got hundreds of submissions through our custom website for inclusion in the piece, and we took a hundred and thirty-five of those drawings and turned them into perforated patterns on the shade panels. So there you can see an example of one of the drawings we got from one of the students, and then the pattern that was produced, the digital pattern version of it that was produced that we could then cut from the panels. You can go to the next one. And there's another one. We were really impressed, there were some of them were so beautiful, we wanted to use them all, but it just wasn't possible to use everything. Next slide. These are some images of the development process for the structure and the glass elements. There's glass pieces in it as well that reflect the colors of Indio. Next slide. There you go, you can see the colors at the bottom. And here you can see some of the images of the intricate shadows created by the structure on the sidewalk. These move and change throughout the day, we were kind of excited about that. It's a challenge with shade structures to have the shadow fall where you want it to all the time to give the best shade, particularly when you've got a narrow strip of sidewalk. But we hope this is satisfying to see. And we're really thankful for the chance to develop this piece and hope it makes a lasting and positive impact for the people of Indio. Thanks.
Great, thank you, Wes and Merrick.
Thank you.
So, yeah, in closing, I hope this kind of informs you as well as the public as far as the history and background on Shadow Walk. I can honestly say I've heard from, actually, a recent resident who said, you know, at first, I didn't understand it, I didn't like it, and then it kind of grows on you as you keep driving by it every day. And so, but what she was really proud of was the use of Indio High School students. That made her very proud, and she was just, thought it was a wonderful idea that, you know, these are our kids that helped make this. So, yeah, I'm free to answer any questions if you have any.
Thank you, Don. And for the people in the public that don't know, this is an art piece that goes down Jackson Street. And there's people that like it, people that don't like it because of how it meanders through and out, and so the people were talking about it. So if we wanted people to talk about it, we've got people to talk about it. So art is in the eye of the beauty of the beholder. And so, you know, I think the story of the students being able to be a part of it, and that tells a little bit more of it, so we could do it. But this was something that some of our businesses did not like, and some other people didn't like, and other people enjoyed it. So we asked the staff to bring back ideas and thoughts of how, what went into putting it there, how the art commission came up with it, where the money came from, because other people were saying you have other money to spend on other things, like it was city money that we took from a certain account, but it was a grant that came to us. So we wanted to clarify that, to make sure that people didn't think it was coming from our Public Arts Commission, actually, the funding from them. And so that's where we came from it. And like I said, we'll let the city council have a few words. Mr. Gutron, I see your mic's up.
I just have two points, and I think it's good for the public to know this. You're very informative, but when was the application submitted? And when was it approved?
So it was submitted in, I believe, August of 2022, and then we approved it later that year, so I think it was December of 2022.
So everything in 2022?
Yeah.
Second, since you presented a well-informed of how it started, how the outreach was, I think Councilman Ortiz actually did tell us that some of the art pieces that were embedded into the art were from our local families and students. And I think it would probably be best if the city manager agrees is to maybe doing some QR-type stuff along the walkway, then maybe our marketing team putting the story on there. So we, as the members of the public and the council, why is it there? If you go to our website, it'll give all the background. And the other thing you might do, maybe some statements from the people of the students that gave that art piece to say, it was beautiful because I was able to do this. Just one or two little, and they can say their name and what high school or school they attend. So then now, when people see it, they'll probably give a little better understanding and support of it. And I know that it's unfortunate that we had some business affected because when they went up, they unfortunately blocked signs and so forth. And I know that for the city manager, we're doing our efforts to correct that, and that would probably be helpful because there's a perception we're not listening, and that's why we keep hearing. I think this is a beautiful presentation, and I gain more respect of it because there was a lot, and I think it was Councilman Wayman Furman that said, we're getting a lot of complaints, but I think it's because we didn't tell the story. And I think if we tell that story, I think it's going to help us. Thank you, and thank you for a good job.
Yes, Sir Furman?
Yes, thank you for your presentation, and I'll second that. And what I got, I got engagement, that's what I got, right? And which is very important for the community, and I'll tell you why. For so many years, that area has been underserved, not on purpose, it just happened like that. And the city has done a great job of focusing on that area, whether it's the sports complex, new sidewalks and curves, LED streetlights, new roads, Avenue 44 Bridge, artwork, public safety. There's been a lot of focus in that community, and I'm very proud of that, that we've been doing that. Now, for this art piece, I was one of those folks. When it came up, I said, okay, I need to get some more context to it. However, I'm a person that needs to sleep on things. And when I come down that, south on that Jackson Bridge, and the sun is beaming down there, it does look like the Yellow Brick Road to me. But when we talk about the kids who are involved in it, and how art is so subjective, and how it's an investment into that area, it grew on me really fast. And I'll tell you why. I have these gray hairs in my beard, right? So I'm used to a routine. One of that engagement discussions I had was what a resident who sent me a video of one of our local YouTubers and TikTok famous people, Damian Turin, and he is very popular. He posted a video of him dancing under that art piece. And it has thousands and thousands of views, and he has thousands and thousands of followers. And that let me know that, you know, Wayman grew up in a different era of Indio. This is for our future, these kids are born with this. They live in the internet world, social media, we weren't born with that. So when we look at forward thinking, I love the project, it grew on me, so thank you. And it did bring engagement, and I love to know more about the kids. I love to hear their stories and what it means to them because that is one of those secrets that we use. Kids, they'll get it done, right? So thank you. I'm not going to talk anymore, I'm done.
Sure, yeah, I actually really like the art side of it, right? The way that it projects the shadows on the ground, and then also the hues that change on the metal, you know, I really enjoy that part of it. I think what we, what I missed when this came up was the utility part of it. Because I do think there's too few of time when it's actually providing shade, and especially when the kids are walking to school, to and from school, I think that's when I would prioritize, you know, when the shade is needed. And I think that's part that I missed, and the other part was, I'm not sure, and maybe you can answer some of this, but how much interaction there was with the business owners there? Because it's been, Mr. Witron mentioned, you know, it did have some pushback from some business owners saying, hey, you know, you're blocking my sign, or I just don't like where this is positioned. So how much, how much interaction did we have with those business owners before this went through? And how can we improve that in the future so that we're getting those conversations done ahead of time?
Yeah, so unfortunately, I came in kind of in the middle of the project, and we've been here for the past couple of years. But there, I can't speak to how robust the outreach was. I know that there were some concerns brought up to the design team during the design of it. You know, like, I know Tops and Barricades reached out. I saw those emails in the files and stuff like that. So there has to have been, but I wasn't around when that happened, but I do know that there was some outreach done. But obviously hindsight, you know, we probably should have done better with that outreach. But, yeah, but I know some was done, yeah.
Anything else, Mr. Ortiz?
Mayor, if I can add though, and I'm sorry I left this out. I do want to commend the staff and the city manager for working with the businesses after the fact. Some of the panels were moved so they could see their new signs and things like that. So we did work with the businesses after the fact.
Thank you, Mr. Furman. Mr. Gutron, I see you're lit up.
No, I was just going to say, I was going to attest that besides Tops and Barricades, two of our churches and about three other businesses. Because I walked the whole, because it caught my attention. But it all ended good. I don't say anybody, I think it's just, again, the communication. And I think we all know, those in public service, just because you told them once, it's never enough.
Yeah.
You have to keep telling them like it's your first time. And I think Sarah Toyota was out there, because I heard your name come up a couple of times, and they thanked you for being out there. And they thanked you for being out there. So it's just continue to market like it's never happened. Just.
Mayor Protem, anything?
Yeah, look at the conversation this has inspired and created. I mean, I think it doesn't get any better than this and gives us a chance to tell our story. And when India can tell its story, um, to me, there's nothing better. And so hopefully this will develop even more TikTok users and, and, and more conversation out there. It's a great project. Needed a little, a little explanation and here we are. So hopefully this, this conversation will develop legs. Thank you for all the hard work you've put into it and taking the time to present this to us.
Yeah, thank you, Donna. And I think more and more was the conversation. And I think Wayman, when he was talking about, it just didn't come with this. It came with a variety of things that made that whole community better. The sidewalks that curve and gutter, it helps us with the sports park. And it really is a decorative uh piece of art that people, as they go through, really want to know what it is, to be honest with you. And so the opportunities are there. So I think it'll grow on people as you go along. That street's the next one after Monroe Street to be the interchange uh going over done. So I'm sure it'll modify a little bit. But in the meantime, it's a, thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you for the conversation. Uh, Chief, you got a little presentation for us, I understand? Chief, before you start, I want to thank you and your team for all that you do on a continual basis for us. The National Night Out, you know, was a great success because of you and your staff. And, and the high schools, obviously you had to reach out. But uh, thank you for your work and dedication. When we talk about our Indian Police Department, we talk about how great you are and what a community asset you and your team are. But uh, you know, we live in a little bubble out here in the Coachella Valley, and especially in India, and a lot of it has to do because of you and our staff. They continue to support us to make sure that we're not only safe, but that we are the best city in the Coachella Valley.
No, thank you very much, Mayor. I really appreciate that. The men and women of the Indian Police Department uh do us proud day in and day out. Appreciate that. Well, thank you for this opportunity, Mayor, Mayor Protem, City Council, to uh provide you an update on recent concerns of uh crime that has occurred at the uh. College of the Desert Indian Campus. I just want to reassure you that we are partnering with College of the, uh, College of the Desert Public Safety. To ensure that our students, our faculty, our community is safe at this campus. I want to give you some facts about the crime that occurs at the, at the location. It's located at the heart of downtown. Surrounding neighborhoods are a mix of homes, businesses, and civic centers. Students have convenient access to restaurants and community uh services. The crime that I'm talking about in this area, I took a look back to January first, twenty twenty-five. That's over ten months of data. The ten months of data that you see are two calls for service from our COD Public Safety. Which included a subject with possession of a pocket knife back in May of twenty twenty-five. And also a possession of narcotics call, uh, August of twenty twenty-five, where they gave us a call to assist them. Uh, we took care of the problem. We partnered with them. Uh, no, no further issues were from that issue. Also during that period of time, there were two self-initiated calls from uh our officers. A drunken public call and under the influence of narcotic call. Most recently, you read, read in the uh news about the most recent call of a, a threats call in, in the bathroom, in a public bathroom at, at campus. What occurred was uh, there was a homeless individual using the restroom. Two individual students had entered that, that restroom to use it as well. Uh, there were some exchange of comments by the homeless person to, to the students. The students didn't respond. They, they kept to themselves or they were trying to take care of uh what they were doing. The homeless person then pulled out a, a screwdriver and threatened to stab the two students. The students immediately exited the, the bathroom and contacted COD Public Safety, which were close by. COD Public Safety took immediate action, uh, got the statements from the individuals, the students. And then made contact with our homeless person that uh had come out of that restroom. They took a photo of that person um and then subsequently prepared a report and later forwarded it to us. We have since picked up that investigation. Our Major Crimes Unit is investigating that. That investigation's ongoing and we're looking to locate the identity of that person. We have uh put out a flyer to our surrounding agencies and to personnel located in and around the area. To look, to identify that person. Our Quality of Life Officers and our, our clinician are working with our homeless uh community to identify this person so that we may bring them to justice. I have to say, from the beginning of this uh incident, we have worked closely with College of the Desert. President Val Martinez Garcia has been very forthcoming, very uh, uh, much a partner in this, in this uh concern. I want to reassure the public, most, most importantly, the students and the faculty of our Indian Campus, that this downtown is safe. It is secure. I want to remind you that these are three calls for service in a ten-month period on this campus. I'm telling you, our downtown is safe. Just to further make the point, I took a look at additional crimes in downtown. We talk about the parking issue that we currently have. As we expand downtown, we're going to provide parking. We're going to provide all these things. We're working with College of the Desert to make sure that our students have appropriate parking. So I took a look at our vehicle burglary break-ins. There's zero for the ten-month period. Thefts, you know, of anything in and around the campus, zero. Batteries. What are batteries? Batteries are fights. People fighting each other, assaulting each other with hands, fists, legs, what have you, zero. Assaults, where people try to assault uh people unknowingly, zero. This is in a ten-month period. I just wanted to assure the community that City of Indio, City of Downtown is safe and secure. That we partner with our businesses, our residential student, uh, uh, residential uh people. And our faculty, staff, and community of Indio Public Safety, I apologize, so College of the Desert. That we make sure that it is safe.
Thank you, Chief.
I'm open to any kind of questions that you may have.
Thank you, Chief. Mr. Gutron, you can head the light up.
Well, I had read the information regarding the incident, obviously, as well as the public. And I'm just gonna put the Wayman Furman hat. I've been doing this for a while. I didn't just spend forty years just dealing with the press. That was an ancillary duty. There was more to my job than just that. And I found it that we can use the word transparent. That doesn't mean anything. Actions mean something to me. And when words come up that I feel that my city, as well as the rest of this council, putting so much effort into our rebuilding, rebranding, whatever you want to call it. At the end of the day, the priority is our community. We want to make sure that they're safe. They can do that. But when I hear that students feel unsafe. And I'm looking at the twenty-four schools we have in our city, in the two school districts. And the, a couple of private, obviously charter schools, but then the private school. There's a lot going on. For a police force of seventy-seven officers and our hope, our goal is to be at ninety, where we should be. Not because that's what the national standard is, but that's the standard of the goal. Is that we're committed to making sure our community is safe. Our priority is what it is. But if we don't get the facts out and jump on these things when they come out, we have to do a press release. We have to go beyond the social media to tell people what we're doing. Believe me. I can attest that what we're doing now is way better than we were twenty-five years ago. But the public needs to know we're doing our best. But you also have to report the crime. There's no crime unless you report it. And it has to be by the victims. And if it, if this is the stats that you see, believe me, school campuses have crime. And we have twenty-four that our police department has to protect and serve. And that's my whole point. We are doing really well. It could change. We have to be proactive. There's some times I've had, people tell me, well, it's not just to the public, it's the police department. It's a partnership. You have to report it. You have to be engaged. If you see something, say something. The information is created to law enforcement and that's how it works. And if it's not reported, I'm not saying it doesn't exist, but it has to be reported. This, this is really good because you have to see how things are nowadays. You have to report things. And uh, I just wanted this to come out. We're doing our best. And so thank you, Chief, for doing a thorough job. And I appreciate everything that our department does, along with our fire department, because this is not a solo partnership.
No.
So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gutron. Mr. Furman?
Yeah, uh, thank you for the presentation, Chief. And um, I, I will piggyback on what Councilmember Control mentioned. Um, I had a lot of folks reach out to me and then I reached out to the chief about it and the city manager. And what's important sometimes is um, folks want information right away and we have to get the facts straight. And at the same time, we have to protect the integrity of an investigation. Because everyone has rights, every party has rights regardless of who they are. So uh, sometimes it does take a little bit to get out there. And so just because something's not on social media or it's not in the press yet, doesn't mean it's not being worked on. Because nine times out of ten, there's, the, the, the boots are already in motion. And just to also put it out there, one thing I do love about our downtown is that we have a collaborative spirit with Indian Police Department. The College of the Desert Public Safety, uh, our CERNA Security, our Ambassador Program, and now Security with the Library. So our goal is to keep our downtown and surrounding communities safe, right? So I appreciate uh, this information. And like the council member mentioned earlier, if you see something, say something. Um, it's just not our police who stop crime, it's everyone. You know, it's not just a reactive thing, it's, it's a progressive thing. So thank you.
Member Tim?
I just wanted to add to all of that. With all the different, our commitment here at the City of Indio is to our city and to our downtown. And the businesses in the downtown, the colleges in the downtown, I am a business in the downtown and I walk one end to the other all the time and feel very safe. Doing that at all hours of the night. So I appreciate your commitment. I appreciate your, your posts on social media. I appreciate the presentation here that you've made in front of council for the public to see. Um, because we are what we are. We are very safe. We are very committed and we are very strong in everything we say and do. And to protect our people, our businesses, our residents, thank you very much for doing such a great job in our community. I also received some of those calls. And, and you know, things just tend to grow. And we nipped it in the bud. Thanks to you and thanks for getting that information out. Appreciate it.
Remember, Mr. Ortiz?
Sure. You know, I was just talking to somebody earlier today about how uh, the increase in foot traffic has really helped us out i- in downtown. And how that's part of our public safety as well, right? Ha- having good business down there, improving the parks has, has improved the foot traffic as well. And when we have more eyes on the road, i- you see the numbers, right, are showing that, that we are seeing a more safe downtown compared to what we saw a few years ago. And the one uh question that I have for you is, with COD, you know, I realize that that threat came in and they took care of it with their campus police. But if it's something of a threat of violence or any kind of violent assault, something like that, should we have them contact us earlier in the process instead of waiting for the report? And that way our officers can be there right away?
Yeah, certainly. Um, anytime you have a crime like this, whether you're a business, residence, or even a college, you need to call nine-one-one. You need to call our uh emergency line to get ahold of us so that we can respond to assist you. They're very capable of handling most incidences. Uh, yeah, we would prefer at any time, even the students themselves, call nine-one-one and we'll be there for you.
Okay. And have we communicated that with the College of the Desert?
So I've met, I've met uh, I've met the president's uh team uh early on, uh, a couple of weeks ago. And we addressed that issue. Uh, and then just on uh this last week, I met with their interim uh public safety director. To again, uh reassure him that we're there for them and make sure that our policies and procedures are in place so that we are there for them. And they are, they are available to assist us if needed.
And for, in, in this instance, for, you know, somebody that's threatened with violence, is, is the protocol at the moment that they call us immediately?
Yes, absolutely. Yeah.
Okay. Sounds good. Thank you.
Mr. Gutron?
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Ortiz.
I just wanted to reassure and had the privilege with um, Councilmember Ortiz and I having our two and two, and President Val, who's excellent. I still went and spoke to a couple of the school board or trustees expressing that, that sometimes time is of an essence to getting active. Issues that are occurring right now, not after the fact, as opposed to you come back to your car, it's vandalized, no suspect leaves or clues, you'll get it. But in, in active crime, when someone's in scared and fear or running away from what's going on, they need to dial nine-one-one.
Chief, I think you're doing an outstanding job. And you have a partnership with College of the Desert, but it's on College of the Desert to be able to reach out to us if they feel that it's important. Obviously, they took the report and moved on. We would have been there in the, in a minute if they would have called us and asked for it. And I know that the answer to that already. But the idea behind this is to make sure that we don't have any other issues going forward. I, I put this part way, we don't want to see anybody get hurt. And these young ladies, obviously, thank God they didn't get hurt. But downtown is very, very safe. We've had over a hundred and sixty thousand more people in downtown. We have all kinds of businesses there and very, very little issues. So I took a little bit of offense with the Desert Sun reporting this as something that like the City of India wasn't doing. If the College of the Desert, not only did the partnership we have now, but assets, we have CERNA, we've upped that, we have the Quality of Life Team. We have all these other assets that we have that we're willing to help them with if they ask us. But we have such a large city, we're the largest city, the oldest city in the world, our oldest city in Coachella Valley, but also the uh, the, the fastest growing. And our resources are stretched throughout the rest of the city. So when we have something and they need something, we will dedicate our, our staff to that. And but it, they've got to come to us and do it. So I know that if you're working with them, maybe talk about it, they have the two-on-twos. But talk to them about how we can address this in the future so that we don't have this issue as much uh of a, a heartache on all of us. Because we are working with them, we are dedicating the resources and we would be there as soon as they called us. So I think if you can train maybe the College of the Desert or work with Mr. Lindell, who's their new public safety uh intern. Maybe we can work with them to cross over so that uh we maybe have more patrols out there and they know when to call us a little bit quicker.
Yeah, we've already put that into place. And so you, you'll see uh, Indian PD officers uh patrolling the area, also getting out on foot, connecting with uh the public safety personnel on campus.
Yeah, I think that's great. And, and as time goes on, as we get our new business, we are going to have to have either a bicycle patrol or other segue. Or something that goes through, that goes through our alleys and goes up and down. We're going to have to have an officer in there, not only during the day, but outside at night to look for individuals doing things. It's just going to be a growing economy that we're going to have to be able to watch. And we can't take it on CERNA to be doing all of it. We're, we're going to have to have police presence, not because it's unsafe, just so it never gets unsafe.
Right.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you for your report.
You're welcome.
And keep us informed if we can do anything for you.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Anything else, Mr. Montgomery?
Uh, that's it. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you for your report. We'll do that on the City Council Conflict of Interest Disclosure. Does anybody have anything they have to disclose? All right. We'll move on to item eight, uh, item nine now, which is the uh City Council Report on Meetings Attended for the Government Code, section five, three, two, three, two point three D. Mr. Gutron?
Just a few things. So on the seventh, as was mentioned by council, we had National Night Out um in downtown. It's interesting because I look back about eighteen years ago when we started getting involved with National Night Out. It, it actually started in the early eighties. But we were participating. We started at the teen center. And we kept hurting ourselves because it was the middle of August. And then uh, it was great because we felt the whole idea of National Night Out, it's the public safety theme. It's about public safety and all our, the collaborative partners that work with your little, your, your police department, wherever you are in the nation. Is to show them the, the collaboration that you have and the service that you provide. We moved it downtown to Town Street. And then with the developments downtown, we had the shade structures, so we took advantage of that. But then we realized you can celebrate it in the first Tuesday of October, which has worked out. So it was really good. And I just wanted to thank the staff and the marketing team partnering up with the police department. But they missed the uh vehicles from Tim, the kids, because they work closely with the police department. We wouldn't have the roads and the traffic signals and the, and the, and the um big machines, like the dump loaders and stuff. The kids love that. So they asked about that. I said, well, maybe we'll remind him next year to bring up his Tonka toys out. You know, because the kids, it's, it's the interaction really for, to market our city services. Because every part of the police department works with all our departments. The water department, you know, even vector control, all those services are great. But it was a nice event and I really appreciate you doing all of that. The next thing, I, I was fortunate to, as a new coming council member, to join our. The next thing, I was fortunate to, as a new coming councilmember, to join our veteran councilmembers at the National League of Cities in Long Beach. I had an opportunity to have some good discussions with all members of the council. Elaine, we missed you.
I will be there next year.
But I know that you're a veteran and you probably already know more than we do. So, but it was nice. We had some really good conversations. I think what I walk away from it is realizing that we're at the same level a lot of cities that are moving forward. It was nice to not play catch-up. It was nice to say, "Oh, you have that, we have this." And, and then the other thing was recognizing people that I've met over the years, in my last 40 years in public service, realizing where they're at now and connecting with them in a different capacity. But, but walking away realizing that we still have things to do. We have things that are just on the horizon of developing. They're not burdens, they're improvements. And it's really nice to be at that position. One of them would be looking at different ways to approach the County Riverside with the fairgrounds. We have a lot of big space that we could partner and underwrite what other organizations in the valley is high-priced. The Fallingwater Building, the days of having the square dancing competition, I haven't mentioned that to the mayor, we had four or 500. The Campers Association coming out. There's a lot of things that we can do to partner and refer things back and forth because the more people they get there, they're going to be downtown.
They're going to be everywhere.
And we have a jewel of a magnet right now where they can come and spend their evenings or incorporated with our Food Truck Fridays and our center stage. So, I think we really need to kind of tweak our strategic planning and take advantage of that fairgrounds in more ways than one. We can probably really compete with the rest of them. The other good thing for me was the ribbon cutting of the library. Wayman, I kind of laughed because Wayman goes, "I remember when I was next door at the McCambers." I go, "Wayman, I remember when we were at Civic and Jackson." Okay? So, it was really nice to see a modern facility and the endless opportunities that facility is going to bring to our public and community. Elaine Holmes eloquently introduced it. We missed the mayor because he was busy, but Elaine stepped right up and talked about it. And to see the county supervisor also give input and the other officials and the librarian of the county being really proud of that. So, if you haven't gone in there, take advantage of it. Indio's offering Indio. So, it's really nice. The, a couple of things, I had the opportunity, my soon-to-be six-year-old granddaughter's playing baseball. So, I was at South Jackson Park. There was about 380 kids and families out there this past Monday. Tim, the park looks a little bit better, but we got to figure out how to manage those bathrooms. Because I had to go to the bathroom and I was right there with a six-year-old kid with a bat and I go, "You're not using that already?" He goes, "No, I think I might need it because I'm about ready to go." So, luckily, I went across the street. I know it's tasking and the kids in this community by the thousands are involved in our programs. So, we just have to, no blame with anybody, just kind of relook at our schedule and see what we have to do. I know that Councilmember Ortiz had mentioned about the bathrooms in the past, but it, there's just a lot going on. So, there's nobody to blame other than, it's our job just to kind of remind each other in those facilities. But it was nice. There was, there was baseball and soccer going on. And I think even with the soccer park open, it's going to still be jamming. So, last but not least, just a couple of good mentions. Gloria Franz put me up to this, I'm going to just blame her. So, the Day of the Dead is coming up for the Coachella Valley History Museum. I was at a, at a meeting the other day and I'm not going to mention the councilmember that said this from the west end of the valley, said, "I didn't even know there was a history museum." Well, let me tell you about it. Come and enjoy yourselves on the Day of the Dead, November 7th, from 5:30 to 10:00. And just not participate in the Day of the Dead, find out about our history, find out who we are. If you don't know where you came from, you not know where you're going. And this is a really good event and I really hope to appreciate that. And last but not least, our Lady Perpetual Health for the last 10-plus years has honored and settled our public safety by the Blue Mass. Currently, Father Eloy and Father Juan are the members of their Lady Perpetual Health and every year they're going to have, October 27th on Monday at 6:30, supporting and honoring our public safety of the City of Indio and those related to that. So, I appreciate the time. Thank you Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Cottrell. Mr. Ortiz?
Thank you Mayor. I recently attended the ribbon cutting for our new public library. I wanted to thank our staff and our partners at Tilden Coil and Holt Architecture for their hard work on finishing this project for us. So, thank you for everybody, all the workers and everybody that put in all that work to get us our new library. It's a great addition and major improvement from our old facility. This is 7, 7,800 square feet and we'll be adding these council chambers to that campus when the new city hall is open, which will be an additional 2,800 square feet for programming for our community. So, this was a $10 million investment, about half coming from the city and half from the state of California. And our library will be open Tuesday through Saturday, so please come check it out. And thank you again to all our staff and partners for a job well done. Last week, I also attended the Cal Cities Conference with some of our council and councilmembers from all throughout the state of California. We come together every year to learn from other cities and share our community stories of success and challenges so we can all learn together with our colleagues throughout the state. Some interesting topics that came up related to our region are, we're expect, one is that we're expected to lose one to three million acres of agricultural land over the next 10 years, mostly due to water shortages throughout the state. There are some pushing to turn these lands into solar fields, but there's also pushback on that because of the impact on food production and the labor impacts as solar doesn't require much labor after installation. Some interesting conversations on renewable energies as well, how our state is looking at biogas, hydrogen, and carbon capture to fit into the future of energy throughout the state. They also talked about the inequities in access to healthcare that are getting worse. We hear that throughout the state, that rising costs and changes in state and federal policy are leading to more working-class residents not having affordable access to healthcare. We also see some hospitals at risk of shutting down, especially in rural areas, which can lead to a lack of access and also overcrowding at their nearby hospitals. Right now, we're seeing Blights Hospital at risk of closing and we may start receiving some of their patients here in Indio soon. I also want to thank our staff for another two great events at National Night Out with our public safety officials and also our free concert last Saturday. We had some great music, great costumes, and people had a lot of fun. So, thank you again to our staff for those events. And lastly, I wanted to, I attended the graduation at the Coachella Valley Rescue Mission where we had heard some amazing stories of recovery from addiction and homelessness. And we saw a few dozen graduates there making their, their progress to moving on to other spaces and getting their housing figured out. And so, we want to thank all the volunteers and all the staff at the Rescue Mission for all their hard work. This is some of the hardest work that goes on in our community, some really tough issues, some really great stories. And one of the great things I always tell people about the Rescue Mission is a lot of those folks that go through the treatment programs there stay here and help many, many more people. So, we're really grateful for everything they do out there at the Rescue Mission. That's all I have. Thank you Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Ortiz. Mr. Furman?
I think I've talked enough already, but so, I have a quick report. I also attended the League of California Cities Annual Conference and it was great. And one of the things that I have to say, I piggyback off my fellow councilmembers is there's challenges in our state, you know, every city, you know? But we're always working on that and that's what we're doing, we're in the people business. So, it's good to see your colleagues from around the state and the country to collaborate and listen to what they're working on solution-wise. And I'll tell you this, I want to tip my hat to our staff and our city manager. It was a lot of bragging on Indio and a lot of questions. Our Quality of Life Team, I spent an hour talking to someone about our Quality of Life Team and collaboration. Councilmember Ortiz mentioned the fall graduation at the Rescue Mission. I was there as well. We talked about our partners and how we work regionally to attack some of our issues. Because the reality of it is, if Indio goes out to get these resources and things that we need from our valley, I mean, from our state and our federal government, it's not going to happen. We have to compete with the Bay Area, Sacramento, Los Angeles, San Diego. So, we work collaboratively in the Coachella Valley to get a lot of our resources. So, it was really an opportunity to, you know, brag on our city and talk about some of the efforts, especially our logo. And so, many people like that. But the great part about it is, is that they're asking us now to be more engaged. They, they want us to go and talk and present and what we're doing. So, I will be talking to our city manager about that because we're getting pulled in a lot more to talk about how we got to where we are in Indio. So, that was great. I also attended the ribbon cutting here for the, the library. That was great. It's historical, you know? For a lot of us who've been here, we watched the demolition of the old library and it was needed. You know, Indio, downtown Indio is becoming a hub for education. We have our college and now we have a library to complement that. And so, it's going to be great for the kids. I know the kids love it, there's a lot of programs. The county and staff do an excellent job activating that space. So, I'm looking forward to seeing that grow. And we also attended a ribbon cutting this morning for, was it Kavi?
Kavi.
Cave Coffee at Fantasy Springs. And so, Fantasy Springs has always been a great partner, Cabazan Mission Indians, a great partner with the city. Chairman Doug Limas was there with his council and he spoke and their general manager spoke. Just another great business. And it's local, they, a contract was up with their former partner, so they opened their own and it's great. So, another great business in the City of Indio. I also attended, one of my favorite things to do downtown was Coffee and Cars. Coffee and Cars is back and that's every, the first Sunday of every month here downtown and it's grown. You know, when we first started, it was something that Skip Page, Ashanti worked with the city and it was, you know, a few cars, few lowriders, motorcycles and things. Now, it's growing, a lot of people are coming, families are coming from all over the valley and outside of the valley to come and get some complimentary coffee at the Tap House and see the cars and just, you know, enjoy downtown Indio. And as we grow and the businesses grow, it's more foot traffic for our local businesses. So, it's, it's, it's always great. So, I love Coffee and Cars. And the last but not least, the fall graduation. And I want to thank the director of Coachella Valley Rescue Mission, Amanda Galindo, her staff, all the volunteers, everyone who has a hand in working with the Coachella Valley Rescue Mission, all the philanthropy work that goes into it. Because those are the folks who are doing the hard work that we don't see sometimes. And they're working with a part of our population, sometimes it has a lot of challenges, but it could be anyone. You know, anyone could fall in hard times and need that assistance. So, the fall graduation was great, we had a lot of great testimonies and I have the honor of being on that board as well. And I also have the honor of being on the advisory board for the Riverside County Fair. So, we'll talk to Mr. Cottrell about how we could continue to activate that because that is a prime location and a great cornerstone in our community. So, I'll, I'll finish with saying thank you to our police department and our first responders and everyone wearing their pink. I'm wearing my pink today in honor of Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Let's continue to educate our young women and also men as well because men can also get breast cancer as well. And, you know, if we see our vehicle driving around, our Indio Police Department vehicle that's pink, it's just a reminder of that there's still people who are battling this. And so, in the world today where we see division and we see people on social media, just going at it with each other, understand that there's people who have real serious challenges and they would love to be in your position. So, think about that when we're battling these things. And so, when I see our first responders wearing these, their pink patches is great because they're, they're not only out there fighting to keep us safe, but they're supporting the fight against breast cancer. So, that will conclude my report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Furman. Amen to that. Member Tim?
Thank you Mayor. Well, I don't know if you all can tell, but Indio's a great place. I am so proud to be part of the city and to work with these colleagues up here on my dais. We are, are just, just knocking it out of the park in terms of the events that we have for our families. Key, how many years ago did we sit here and say the most important thing that we need is to bring our families together? And you've just heard all of us talk about National Night Out, that gets better and better and more amazing every year. It was, it was packed, people were walking around downtown, the stage, the band, the music, people were hanging around. And, and that just fosters community engagement and relationships. And I just, you know, stood back and looked around at all the people that were walking around that downtown. And, and it was just really wonderful to see people making new friends, learning and creating those kinds of relationships with our police department, staff, and our city. Library, I mean, as you can tell, it's huge for us and that library is remarkable. It's remarkable not just because of the physical building, but because of what it represents to our students, to our little kids. You know, they had all kinds of neat little programs in there that teach our little kids and the adults. I have a lot of adult friends that go to that library and it's a place to gather and to meet. And when that 2,800 square foot space, community space, there will be even more collaboration, more places for people to gather and really enjoy our city. Second Saturday, you know, staff, you guys, again, you knock it out of the park. When I think we have reached a point of ultimate creativity, you just ratcheted up a notch. The creativity in this organization knows no bounds and the desire to serve this community is unequal. Thank you very much for that. Second Saturday was a lot of fun, great costumes, people, great music, different bands. By the way, Desert Beer is open there and, and on Smur, so I was there with a couple of friends, that was very nice, several people in there. So, lots happening, lots that continue to go on. And it was really great as well for, to attend Kavi Coffee and that ribbon cutting and just to watch great, great partners in Fantasy Springs and Cabazan Mission Indians. It was great to support them for a change, they support us in so, so many ways. So, thank you to this wonderful and great community. This is just the beginning. Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor Potem. I had a couple of committees that were active. One was the Animal Campus for the Coachella Valley run by the Riverside County. It's going to be a long tedious way to try and get us our way out of this issue now that they're going to a no-kill shelter. It's about 240% of capacity, most of them large dogs. And they're trying to ship them out through plains and other areas, but there's just not enough opportunities and space to be able to do that right now. So, they're working on a plan, it looks like it's going to be very expensive in the long run, which will be then assessed by the cities to be able to do that if there's going to be a no-kill shelter. But they're going to have to build a second facility somewhere in the East Valley. A lot of the animals that are coming are coming from Thermal Mecca, Indio, Coachella, Bintecan, all the way to Thousand Palms. And even though Palm Desert and Desert Hot Springs have shelters, they're at capacity too. So, it's really been very difficult. So, they're coming up with ideas and plans, but it's really run by the Riverside County, so which makes it difficult because they're the lead agency of running this. And then, kind of like some of the other agencies we're in, they, they lead and then we pay our share based on what it is. So, a lot of comments, a little bit of good news, the Loving All Animals got a complete vet staff, veterinarians are at a premium and so they were able to get one for one year, all paid for and that, so they'll be able to provide services to people at very low cost or no cost. So, that hopefully will help Ken and Kim Hardy with her stuff. So, keep you abreast of what goes on, but I'm sure the city manager knows that they're talking about more funding for this shelter. We were all at the League of California Cities, a great way to network, some great classes, being able to talk about Indio and what we've been able to accomplish. A lot of cities are looking forward to what we've been able to do and them doing the same thing. They're looking at our downtown, they're looking at how we've partnered with other agencies. And so, our hats off to staff and all the agencies that we work with. But it was a great time in Long Beach to be able to network with some of the other cities and see what they're also doing too. So, that was great. National Night Out, I can't say enough about our staff, our marketing staff, our economic development staff, public safety, all came together to put this together. And like I said earlier, there's 160,000 more people in downtown than there was last year and that comes with a lot of effort. But when you see National Night Out, Asada Festival, everything else coming up, the Tamale Festival, I expect even more. Lots of great stuff coming in downtown and that's why we're going to have to really look at what we're doing. But it comes with a dedicated staff. But Chief, thank you for getting Indio High School and Shadow High School there, the But Chief, thank you for getting Indio High School and Shadow High School there, the dance teams and the bands to be able to be a part of it. It really is about bringing the community out. So when we put that center stage in there, I think a lot of people thought we were crazy. Uh, what are they gonna do with it? And here we are today as a focal point and a center of bringing community, people out and bringing our community together to be able to have all kinds of events there. So that's a a great opportunity. As as we said, we have some ribbon cuttings. I was also at the uh West Coast Self-Storage, opened up over off of um of uh Dr. Kerry on there and a great opportunity for uh us to be able to have another storage unit. But this is really high end. They have air conditioning places. It has a lot of uh of stuff that some of the other uh storages that we have don't have. And we got the new one opened up for Oscar Lua and statewide uh next to theirs. So we're gonna have a couple more grand openings. And then the uh Cave, uh Cave Coffee at uh Fantasy Springs. They had the whole uh team there. Uh, we do have our State of the City coming on October twenty first. So please come down to Fantasy Springs and hear what's going on. All of the council members are gonna have a part in this. We're gonna talk about all the great things that we've done over the last year, where we're going and some more events. So please come out. Uh, I think Jessica and I say that it's sold out. So we have over four hundred and sixty people coming. So we are sold out and we'll be able to highlight a lot of uh things that are, uh like I said, to come. So we're very fortunate to have a great city, great business community and and a council that has a great staff behind it to to continue to make this city. But it really is all our residents and our businesses that continue to to make us thrive. So we're thankful for that. And uh with that, I will end the conversation and we'll move on to the consent calendar. We have ten one through uh ten eight. Is there anybody that wants to pull anything or does anybody have anything that they gotta rekey themselves on?
I would just like to pull ten seven. It's the State of California Office of OTS. Sorry, Chief and City Manager, but I think it's important to talk about this because of the traffic education and enforcement.
Anyone else? We got ten point seven, anybody else needs anything? No? Okay, Ben, what what is it that you're asking?
Well, obviously, one of the top tickets, no pun intended, is traffic and the moving and traffic violations and the police department is doing everything they can to grow the traffic in it. So again, this is an important opportunity, it's seventy five thousand dollars. But Chief, can you expand on how this money will be used based on your report to the public?
Yes, certainly, uh Councilman Gudron, uh Chief Brian Tully, your police chief here. Uh, just a summary of what it is. The State, the State California Office of Traffic Safety awarded the city of Indio a selective traffic enforcement program grant in the amount of seventy five thousand dollars to support additional training and traffic-specific enforcement uh efforts within our city. The enforcement efforts include DUI checkpoints, which we're gonna have this weekend, DUI saturation patrols, collaborative enforcement efforts and specific enforcement efforts focused on traffic safety, education, distracted driving and pedestrian and bicycle safety.
I appreciate it, Chief. Um, again, it's, city's growing, we're rebuilding the traffic team as the chief gets veteran officers to take those assignments. We were down to one motor officer, we're moving into three. We've invested more and as the city grows, hopefully our team will be back to six or seven. To because we have schools, traffic, daily travel and I, we all hear about the traffic. And so it's not just an Indio thing, it's a valley thing. So thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Ben. Any anything else? Okay, so somebody like to make a motion on the consent calendar?
I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
I'll second the motion.
First by Mayor Protem, second by Councilmember Gudron. Please vote. Passed unanimously four zero with Wayman Furman off the dais at the present time. We'll move on to item number eleven now, which is administrative items. It's eleven point one, this draft, Sustainability Plan and Work Plan twenty twenty five. Ms. Toyota, you handling this for us?
Thank you, Sarah Toyota, Environmental Programs Coordinator. This item is the Sustainability Plan and Work Plan twenty twenty five. It's meant to reflect sustainability programs and advancements citywide. The last time we brought this to city council was about two years ago in twenty twenty three. And since then, we've updated it with some new information. We've incorporated some of the local hazard mitigation plan. And uh we've added uh two goals, communication and resiliency. It's a, there's a lot of work going on throughout the city that advances sustainability. And we wanted to uh highlight some of those things. And so in this plan, we did did some callouts for the Indio Lindo Program, the Shop Local Program and the water resource work or water resource um protection work that IWA does. The plan includes seven goals and a list of actions that uh we're working on, that we're currently working on to advance those goals. We uh, a lot of the programs are ongoing, so the plan is meant to be about a two-year work plan. We have done a lot of work with C-VAG. We've been working with them to uh, we've been active with their Comprehensive Climate Action Plan, which covers all the cities in the valley. We've been working with IRN to do some audits, to do energy savings in the city facilities. We also work with IRN uh to get a Civic Spark Fellow here and she is in the audience now. She came all the way from Washington State to work with us. So she'll help advance some of these as well. Her name is Ellen Lewis. Uh, we have EVs going in at the city hall and at the golf course. We are working with a consultant and the s- the senior center and the IPAC to reduce their waste to a point where they can become true zero waste certified. And at this time, IPAC is diverting ninety percent of their waste. We're also continuing our sustainability uh collection events. And of course, again, IWA is doing amazing work protecting water resources.
Sarah, how how is IPAC doing? I mean, what makes them so different compared to everybody else?
Well, the true zero waste program is very uh, there's a lot of, there's a lot of work, there's a lot of record keeping, there's a lot of uh data that you have to do to actually be able to show that you are zero waste certified. And we knew that that, you know, small businesses, uh if we were gonna kind of roll this out ever, that they were gonna need help. So we brought in some consultants who are are very, they've worked with this program particularly true true certification. And they've been working with IPAC to do a lot of the data collecting, to do a lot of the um the waste audits, to see what exactly they they need to divert and then trying to work with them and um our surrounding facilities to figure out how they can do it and actually make it happen. So they've been very active, but I think that having that support has been uh really instrumental in getting them them to uh to that point where it's at ninety percent uh you can start uh putting in for your certification.
Well, thank you.
We put in bike lanes pretty much whenever, you know, if it's safe to do so, grind and overlays, then we look at it or if we can do it uh during or at it during new construction. Outreach and communication is something that this commission has really wanted to focus on. And they, we have, uh, there's a particular focus on it in this plan. And we have a pretty good list of things that we want to either get started or to to really improve. And we're still working on um considering adding some of these things to the list. And then also, you know, providing shade and then having the emergency backpacks available through the city website. That helps with resiliency. The commission also understood that the city council was interested in uh green building or sustainable buildings. And so they've been doing a lot of work and research into adobe houses, into programs like Lead for Cities, the Green Building Policy Accelerator. And we also have Ben Stapleton, who is the Executive Director of the US GBC California. He's gonna zoom into the next Sustainability Commission and talk about wildfire preparations or reductions and uh risk reduction and and sustainable buildings as well.
Sir Gudron?
Just real quick, Sarah, you mentioned the alternative materials for building and whatnot, like the adobe housing. Has the commission shown an interest into looking into that further? In matter of fact, get the commission more involved, maybe do a trip where this housing materials are being done so we can understand better and make sure that's also a quality type build rather than just, you know, some people envision it's just gonna be just mud put together with a door on it. But we know it's, there's a lot of current um product out there that you can't even tell. So I'm just curious, besides the commission just showing up here, getting them involved because that way it helps us as this body to make him some good, sound decisions on future.
Um, that's exactly the kind of feedback we would, we we're happy to get. Um, and we have looked into it, but we haven't really moved any further than that and um we would be happy to do that.
I just know that the topic comes up and we have obviously opinions, but I think we have this independent body and they need to go do their homework and say, good, bad or indifferent.
Mr. Ortiz?
Thank you.
I I think the the only thing I would ask is, can we include the, this kind of sustainable construction part in some part of maybe Goal Two or Goal Seven?
Absolutely.
Yeah, that'd be great. And then I did get some context. I've been, everywhere I go, I've been talking about this. I know people are probably tired of hearing it from me. But uh at Cal Cities, what uh Councilmember Furman actually found a nonprofit that's working on that. Uh, they have a current construction project going on in Ojai. And so I do wanna make it out there and see if we we're able to maybe observe how that process is working. We also do have Cal Earth that is in Hisperia, close to Victorville. And they have a campus there with a few different types of buildings that you can tour and stuff like that. Maybe that's would be a good option for uh for the commissioners as well or or bringing them in and having them present here. So it's two different nonprofits that I've found. Uh, on the private side, we have tried to reach out. I know we had an RFP out for an acre and we just weren't able to get anybody to bid on on that project. And so um I've been thinking, you know, possibly we can rewrite that in a way that's more clear that the city would be willing to donate the land for a good project that's maybe providing affordable rates or some percentage of affordability, some kind of incentive, but making it clear to the bidders that, you know, that land would potentially be free for a good project that serves the residents or serves our housing needs, something like that. But I uh definitely open to answer any questions you might have in the future or staff might have some things.
Any uh building material, I mean, over or the other? I mean, it's, what are they leaning towards? Is it adobe?
Uh, it looks like people are going towards straw house. So it it's adobe, but it's with, they use uh straw bales as the insulation and then they cover it with adobe over that. And so I think that provides a little bit more earthquake safety because of the straw in the middle. Uh, the other benefit to that with both adobe and straw house is that you have the outer layers adobe and it's not, i- it's very fire resistant. And so I think that's gonna be a big selling point to the rest of the state in saying that w- w- we're doing a financial analysis on how to build fire-resistant housing that could potentially be a barrier for other neighborhoods or potentially be able to rebuild in fire-prone areas without as much danger. Also, you have, you take away the risk of contamination of the land when you do have wildfires or natural disasters. These construction materials don't make it into your water and through your air and all those kinds of issues. So a lot of different benefits to it, also the energy efficiency of it. We know that it saves a ton of energy and we'd like to see in the financial analysis that i- if we potentially have a project here, how much do you save in Indio in these temperatures over ten or twenty years? What is the financial savings that you get uh from that type of construction?
What's the cost of, per square foot, is it comparable?
Uh, what I saw in Ca- at Cal Earth in Hisperia, they were saying they built a four-bedroom with two garages that was hooked up to uh utilities. And they said their estimate for today's price would be three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Yeah, so.
Sorry, got off the subject.
Yeah.
I was just interested.
So just a lot of potential there.
Yeah. Uh, so you'll be working with the Sustainability Commission on this, uh to bring them into this? Yeah, we'd love to see what they could come up with, so.
Yeah, absolutely. And and the feedback is exactly, exactly what they, what they were looking for.
Wonderful. Continue.
Um, the last thing I wanna say is that yeah, I'll, I I appreciate the opportunity to be here and present this to you, but this is a citywide plan. And um, you know, we appreciate the feedback and the support from the city council. These commissioners are amazingly in in uh involved. They're active in bringing speakers and ideas and and all of that. But, you know, the plan is a result of all of the staff here at at on Team Indio. So um with that, um, that's all I have for the presentation. There's a couple of uh of the s- the commissioners who are here. If you'd like to talk or ask them any questions and uh and that's it.
We'd love to bring up Ms. Lewis if you could and then and have her introduce herself to our councils and I'm sure the staff knows, but our our community. And and if any of the commissioners would like to say something more, then happy to have you come up. Welcome.
Yeah, I think she'll bring all the commissioners up.
Yeah. Yeah, come on up. Yeah, she's not commissioner. So Lewis, tell us a little about yourself.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem Council. Um, I'm originally from Seattle, Washington. Um, and I recently graduated from Gonzaga University where I double majored in sociology and environmental studies. I recently graduated with my Bachelor of Arts this past May. Um, and I'm here as an AmeriCorps Civic Spark Fellow, which is funded by the Public Health Institute. So that's where I'm getting paid from. Um, so yeah, I'm here to support Sarah and her work with the environmental programs. And I'm really excited to be part of Team Indio. I'm enjoying my time here so far. Um, so yeah, I'm really, I'm really excited to get involved and work with you all.
Thank you and welcome to Indio.
Thank you.
Good afternoon.
Hello.
Uh, all of the city council and mayors and all the staff and our residents. Uh, my name is uh Anitha Lu and I sit on the commission. And uh, one of the reasons I think why we're here today is because I ran into um Councilmember Ortiz some time ago and I said, we we need some feedback. You know, the, one of the last things that Sarah said is that this is not a plan for the commission. It's a plan for the city. And and really why this is important to us all is because it's about improving the quality of our lives and our homes, our streets where we live. You know, you talked about the the um sustainability of the buildings. One of the things that help with, some simple things that help with fire resistance, things like landscaping that, you know, we found. Um, I'm also a member of US Green Building Council California. So, you know, networking with those organizations to get the knowledge in. But it's not sufficient that the council, that the commission have the knowledge. Our uh aim right now, where we need to pivot to, is to get this information out to the community. We want the community to come in to this, to the uh commission meetings. We want to hear from you. So we're really here today to listen all the words that were said before uh the the ch- the chamber about engagement, um, you know, you, you, I heard that, all of these, all of these words. That's, that's what we wanted. Um, I know everyone's attention is stretched, so it makes it difficult. So the best thing that we can do is synergize our efforts with yours because, you know, people only have so much bandwidth. I think that's what we're trying to maximize. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your volunteers.
Absolutely.
Good evening, Mayor Miller and City Council and staff. Uh, my name's Dave Getka. I'm the current chairman of the the commission. And uh we appreciate your feedback tonight. Uh, I think our plans were at one time to have a working session with you all. Or to reach out independently to each of our council people that we represent for and have more dialogue on what your views are and your vision for sustainability of the city. So we hope we can do that going, moving forward. And um I know uh Mr. Ortiz, Councilman Ortiz, has a vivid interest in sustainable construction. So we will be looking at that and trying to get some speakers and some companies in here to give us some presentations.
Thank you.
And report back to you. So, uh, again, appreciate the time this evening and uh thank you very much for your support.
Mr. Gudron, you have something?
Just, Mr. Getka, I just also wanna recognize your efforts besides this. You're a member of our city police department's CHIP program. You're involved with the Office on Aging. And I think you're still involved in the emergency preparedness in your resident of our Four Seasons.
Terrarium.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank all of you and we'll look forward to uh having a session, Mr. Montgomery. Maybe we can talk to Sarah about uh bringing something up, work with either Mayor Protem, depending on when it comes up, or and uh Mr. Ortiz on, you know, bringing that forward. And maybe we can have an out outpour of uh ideas and thoughts and where we go with that along with our staff.
We have a joint session.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll send a couple, two more questions for staff. Essentially, uh, just wanted to see if you have any updates on how the organics stuff is going at the moment? I- if there's any feedback on that or any improvements that are needed? And I know one of the questions I got for a long time was what kind of bags are acceptable to put your organics in, that kind of stuff. Also, on the Evra side, if there's any updates on the recycled water and and any potential for the use of that recycled water? I know we're looking at the golf course, the Purple Pipeline, but I know some options are a little bit too expensive. So just wanted to see if there's any updates on either one of those two uh topics.
Okay, for the organics diversion in the thirteen eighty-three, uh, there's two sides of it. We know that we are um, we are in, that it's increasing. We know that from the numbers from uh BRTech. We know that uh people are definitely diverting a lot, a lot more organic and food waste into the compost. However, I also run into a lot of people who are are, who just um don't know enough or have questions about it. So we have made progress, but we do have a lot of, a lot of outreach that I think we should. So we have made progress, but we do have a lot of outreach that I think we should still do. Just for the, just to put it out there, bags are allowed in your green bin. Like if you have food waste, you can put it into a plastic bag, a paper bag, whatever you want, and then put it into the green bin. They have a huge deep packager they had to buy that will pull all of the bags out before it feeds into the compost. So it's not worth it to buy a composting bag because it won't get broken down before it goes through that process. So use a bread bag, whatever you have, and that's fine. You can do that.
What about paper bags?
Paper bags are fine, and they're, I prefer them, but you can use either one. Paper bags work.
Paper bags are hard to come by these days.
Elder markets have them.
I just buy lunch, like the big lunch bags, and I just fill those. But when stuff's let it dry out a little bit, so it's not like soaking, and I throw it in there and just throw it into my green bin. That's my method.
Yep, a little more education, a little more outpour of support from the big OHOAs, and away we'll go.
Yes.
Mr. Trejo, you're going to talk to us about Purple Pipe, I think?
Just real quickly, question was on Evra, which is the East Valley Reclamation Authority. That's a partnership between the City of Indio, IWA, and the Valley Sanitary District. We do meet on a quarterly basis. The latest in the project is we're modifying a large scale project to a more meaningful project to the residents. When we went full scale, meaning trying to utilize the entire volume of the outflow of the project, the costs on residents and the fees to construct such a large project was cost prohibitive. And we all recall that potential rate increase. So what we're looking at is looking at federal and state dollars that can subsidize those costs. And we're also looking for a project about the fifth of the size of what was proposed last two years. We're looking at across the freeway to see if Fantasy Springs has an opportunity with the Eagle Falls Golf Course. That would be a large user. So as long as we can bring subsidies from the federal side, state side, we want to make sure that it's a project that's meaningful for the residents and one that we can tolerate with some level of rate increase that doesn't affect our residents. So again, every quarter we meet, and we have completed a study that's showing us some flexibility in a smaller scale project. But I think the next steps beyond that would be seeking grant funding to see if that's available to deploy a project. Again, fifth the size, so we're looking at about 1,000 acre feet a year versus a 5,000 acre feet a year. So 1,000 acre feet, about 2,000 residents equivalent to that demand. So that's the size of project we're looking at for now.
Well, one of the things that I've at least recommended, I know it's kind of a long shot, but I would want to see if there's, because I know a lot of this water right now is just going out to the wash, right? And some of it eventually goes out to the Salton Sea. But seeing if there's a potential to do any studies, like agricultural studies? Maybe looking at, what I pitched to Valley Sanitary was regenerative agriculture. So looking at, you know, a lot of times northern California, people are figuring out how to grow crops without pesticides or without fertilizers. And to me, that's kind of one of the only solutions that I would see for actually getting clean water to the Salton Sea is switching over to regenerative agriculture throughout, you know, some of our agricultural lands. I have pitched that, but I know, you know, they have their own board and they're making their decisions. But hopefully sometime we can consider something like that and happy to answer any questions or meet up with you at any point if you'd like to talk about that.
Yeah, it's a good suggestion. The only, one of the things we need to keep in mind is conveyance of that water to the right source. So if it's ag, how many miles of pipe are we talking about?
Oh, no, I was looking at using the land right next to Valley Sanitary.
Yeah, okay. And that's probably a conversation we can have and bring up at the next Evra meeting because we are constantly looking for any type of idea that can best use that water. It's something that we can, we have two board members sitting on our dais today that can at least see what opportunities are with that.
Yeah.
And just to see whether or not the regulation, permissible regulation from the state of California, as you can imagine, is that going to introduce, is going to require a Title 22 permit? What kind of permitting are we looking at? Are we looking at also PFOS and forever chemicals that need to also be addressed with that type of application? So, and also the selenium levels when you're dealing with ag. And again, I come from a background of a lot of water reuse applications. But those would be the questions that we would immediately face. And again, it's an opportunity that we should explore.
And I think the competition for that dollars, especially now when we have chromium six issues and that too that we're having to pay, and the amount of dollars that we did, the chance of us beating out in LA or somebody else for that kind of money is minute to none because of the amount of water we'd actually be using. And would people from the Salton Sea or the environmental group complain that the water that we're putting in there now that's going to the Salton Sea wouldn't be going there because we use it for other stuff? There was a lot of different ideas and thoughts going through the board, basically, on where we could go and raise a knowledge, a book of knowledge of all this stuff. So good ideas, but what were we talking, was 60 million?
No, the full scale project was closer to $100 million when we wanted to go full plant. But again, things we can explore, your comment about reducing flows to the Salton Sea requires another permit amendment, and it also requires an outreach. So as much as we try to make beneficial use of that water here for Indio, there are benefits that, or at least entities that we need to face to reduce that water to the Salton Sea. It is a balancing act, but again, reducing it to a fifth of the original size, I think, may bring the right size project. Again, subsidies are necessary. I'm guessing, I'm estimating, not guessing, right now we're looking at a $10 million project. We'd have to bring in at least half, if not more, to contribute towards that $10 million project we're discussing here.
Got you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ray. Sarah, you need us to approve the plan? Is that what we have on work and everything? Okay. Any, this is not a public hearing, so anybody have any more comments or does anybody like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion and approve the draft sustainability plan and work plan for 2025.
First, by Councilmember Furman, second by Councilmember Ortiz, please vote. Passes unanimously 5-0. We'll move on to our first public hearing item, which is IEFA Resolution Number 2025-03, confirming the Indio Electric Finance Authority's participation in the statewide community infrastructure program of the California Statewide Communities Development Authority. Miguel, are you handling this for us, sir?
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem and members from the council. Miguel Ramirez-Corteno, Director of Economic Development. Tonight, we are asking for your recommendation, or actually the recommendation of approval of resolution of the board members of the Indio Electric Financing Authority to allow participation of the skip program, the statewide community infrastructure program that is administered through the California Statewide Communities Development Authority. And it essentially allows another funding mechanism to developers to access tax exempt bonds. And this is to include the new IEFA and the fees associated with that, so they can get power to their, to their properties.
So when they do the bonds, would it be on the backs of the people that buy the houses? Or who would, would it be like a CFD that they would end up having to pay?
This is for commercial properties.
Commercial properties only?
Yeah, for, for commercial properties. We have one applicant right now, a 50,000 square foot medical office building that would like to take advantage of it. That's how this kind of started. It was going to cost them about $1.4 million to pay out of pocket. They really can't charge that back to a tenant. So doing it this way will allow it to kind of recoup that money over time as well.
Excellent. Okay. Anything else? Any questions of Miguel or anything, anything else you need, Miguel? Before we open the public hearing?
That's it.
With that, open a public hearing. Does anybody want to discuss? I don't have anybody in the queue to speak. Anything stoppy? Okay, with that, we will close the public hearing. What's the recommendation, recommendation of the council?
I recommend that the board directors of the Indio Finance Authority adopt Resolution Number 2025-03, amending the restating the Indio Electric Finance Authority participation in the statewide community infrastructure program, thereby authorizing financing of the IEFA power capacity fees and related public capital improvements. I'll second that.
First, by Councilmember Furman, second by Councilmember Ortiz, please vote. Passes unanimously 5-0. We'll move on to the last resolution, Number 12.2, which is Number 100522, Planning Commission Recommendation to the City Council for Approval of Ayers Tentative Track Map, Number 39130, Case Number PLA-N-TTM-25-003, to subdivide one existing parcel, APN 611056010, totaling .33 acres into six residential lots located at 82489 Valencia Avenue within the Connected Neighborhoods High General Plan 2040 designation in Connected Neighborhoods CN20 zoning district. Mr. Halverson, are you handling this for us, sir?
Yes, I am, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem. Members of the council, Brian Halverson, Director of Community Development. Good to do the last item. We'll make a quick hopefully here. So let's go ahead and just show you a few slides. Yes, tonight is the Ayers Tentative Track Map. It already went to Planning Commission. Of course, you're considering a Planning Commission Recommendation of Approval tonight to subdivide a small piece of land, a little under 15,000 square feet, 0.33 acres. The applicant is not here present, but is available on Teams at the end of my presentation if you have any questions for him. You already stated the location of the sites. We'll just go straight to a little vicinity map here, showing where that's located, north of Leroy and south of Valencia Avenue, just across from Miles Park. You see the property located there. Took this picture today, so you can just see how the land looks. That's proposed to be subdivided, as seen from Valencia Avenue. You'll see that there is a sidewalk there, curb or gutter. But on the other side of the property, there is no sidewalk, curb or gutter. So as part of this map, it's conditioned to do those, those public improvements. Just kind of showing the surrounding area. This area is in the Connected Neighborhood High. It's pretty much surrounded by single family homes. Of course, the park is across the street. And it is in an area, believe it or not, that is considered a mixed use zone. It's called the Connected Neighborhood 20. So tonight, it's a simple subdivision of six lots. And that subdivision meets the code, the general plan. It also meets the requirements of the Subdivision Act as well. And any future structures, of course, you're not actually reviewing that tonight, just the subdivision of the land. But those will be required to meet all the requirements of the code when those come in, which would be a simple building permit. This is just a quick view of the map before you, those six lots. You can see it's bounded by two streets on both sides, which makes it nice for access. There is off of Leroy, there are some above ground electrical lines. So again, the map is also conditioned to underground those utilities. These are small lots. They're ranging anywhere from 1,820 square feet. The largest lot is approximately 3,013 square feet. Average lot size is 2,375 square feet. So you might be wondering, what are we going to get? We don't know because it's only a building permit. But most likely what they're trying to do is sell these lots, these six individual lots. And then you'll see homes eventually. I also want to emphasize that our Public Works Engineering Division also conditioned to have common driveways because these lots are so small, they want to limit the number of curb cuts on those two streets. So you're probably going to see, you know, the driveway positioned right in between those lot lines to make better use of space. So again, as I mentioned, it meets the general plan, the UDC, and all the requirements of our Subdivision Map Act and our municipal code. And as far as environmental review this evening, it's a simple exemption. That's, we're asking you to approve tonight, based on the Planning Commission, who's already looked at this, recommending approval of Track Map 39130. That concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions, as well as if we do, the applicant is on Teams, if you have questions on any of his intent with this map. It will come back to you as a final map as well for the bonding and the subdivision improvement agreement. And this wasn't part of the script this evening, but we are in the process of updating our subdivision ordinance. So one of the things that I'm trying to accomplish is to kind of streamline some things. So if the council agrees, when we come back, there will be some provisions where the final map would come to the council. But maps like this, smaller maps, would not. But that does conclude my presentation. If there's any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer those.
Mr. Gettran, do you have your lighter?
Yeah, I just, yes, I did. I just had a, just a question. So the ingress and digress into these lots would be on Valencia and also on Leroy Way?
That's correct. I'll put the map up again so you can see those two streets.
I was just, I was just kind of curious for the traffic flow because there is obviously Leroy Way ends up being an alleyway on the other side. By the way, Leroy Way is named after one of our founding fathers of the city, for whatever that's worth. I think it's important, but it's good to see that there's progress. There was actually homes, I remember when some of them burned down. That's actually how we have some of those lots. This is the second area of what our oldest residents are for the city. This area and across from Jackson, off of Highway 111 on the east side. But I appreciate the progress. Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem?
These lots just seem so, so small. And then they share a driveway, so they're going to be affordable. So it's going to be families, kids. So you're going to have a half a dozen cars and then you're going to have to share with your neighbor. I mean, I don't know, team, but this does not sound appropriate. I'd rather see apartments there or something. It just, it sounds like a lesson for disaster. Those are tiny, tiny, tiny lots. And for each house to share a driveway, I don't like that.
Can you show us on here where they're going to park?
Yeah, well, tonight, it's not a design review, it's not a development plan. So just a subdivision of the land. So certainly, if you want to ask the applicant, they might have some ideas. But at the same time, I think what they're trying to do is just sell those individual lots.
I guess, where do we envision the parking being for these families?
So I, I think, even though I'm not designing it for them, the way that I'm envisioning this is possibly, you're basically going to see a garage, and the living area is going to be behind it. And of course, there's setback requirements and things like that. But we just don't know what we're going to get until they submit for the building permit. This is not necessarily an affordable project. There's no covenant. There's no project per se. But I think what you're probably going to see is, you know, some small houses, garages in the front, living area behind it. They will have to have, you know, a 15-foot rear yard setback, five and five on the sides, 10 in the front. But it is small lots. But I will say this, the UDC is encouraging that missing middle housing. And so this is a middle housing, which is supposed to have a range of different styles, different lot sizes. And it is surrounded by single family homes. They're not large homes. So we don't know exactly what we're going to get, but, you know, the applicant, if they're having a certain vision, they could explain that this evening.
And we also have a Planning Commissioner here if we need to also. So, but I mean, the concerns are valid. Mr. Gettran, you have something?
No, it's just that what Mayor Pro Tem, it sparked something else that unfortunately, I don't believe we have any control, is the garage conversion. So what's the chances they build it out and then they convert the garage? Now we have more vehicles in the street. Our street service, Tim's efforts, trying to keep the streets clean, it's a challenge because we keep hiring our parking enforcement to be police officers. So our ongoing consistency of doing street education enforcement. So I just see kind of bouncing off what the Mayor Pro Tim says. We have to look 20 years ahead. Yes, we have to meet the mandates of housing, but we also don't want to have a clutter in the quality of life just get destroyed. So we need to think, unfortunately, with the new laws that are permitting conversion of garages, I have a challenge with it because it's traffic issues and parking issues. That's what Long Beach and the big cities are dealing with now because they're just converting things left and right and then putting little small homes in the back. More families live there because they can't afford a home. So something we just have to strongly get really creative.
And the map is also conditions, hard to interrupt, where there'd be red curbs. But by the time they put in those driveways, this is not a big property at all. There isn't really any opportunities for on-street parking unless it's on the other side. So just letting you know that, that's a good point, and it is not going to be onsite parking. So something to just be aware of.
Mr. Ortiz?
Sure. No, I was just going to say, I'm okay with the small lot size. I think we, people are looking for smaller homes, especially, you know, the young folks or older folks that can't afford, you know, the full lots that we see now, the larger lots and bigger homes. But yeah, I do want to make sure that we have parking somewhere on that parcel so that we're not pushing people towards the street or filling up those streets even further. So that's just my concern.
Yeah, they're required per code to have either a garage, covered parking in a garage or a carport. So I think it's going to be tough to do a carport. I think you're just going to see a garage in the front. But they are required, that parking will be covered. But as we all know, it's the visitors, and if you convert the garage to an ADU, I think that's where it's going to get challenging. But we won't be able to prevent the ADUs, though.
And the six lots, they're set on six. I mean, you couldn't do four, you know, and open that up a little bit. I mean, I understand he wants to sell them, and I understand the tiny houses and smaller houses that are affordable. There's no guarantee they're going to be affordable either.
No.
So I mean, there's not like we can do anything about that either. But it is true. I mean, you go down some of those streets and there's just... I mean, you go down some of those streets and there's just cars cluttering the whole area up and down. It becomes a public safety nightmare. It comes a, you know, hazard to, to people because you can't walk out from a car without, you know, somebody coming by at a high rate of speed because, you know, you're out there. So there are some issues and I know it's affordability. So maybe we can hear from the applicant if we have to, we can hear from the planning commissioner. Or in your opinion, do you see a problem with this? I mean, I'm asking you as a planner, that do you see this being an issue?
Well, I just want to say that this, they are set on the six lots. And that meets the density. It's like six point six and they're doing six. So I, I would say that it is appropriate, but really where the, the difficult part is, is the details. So when they come in and apply for that home, how does it function on the property? You know, how is the massing and how do they, you know, address parking? I mean, there's going to be a two-car garage, but it's really who lives there and how many cars they have, which we cannot control. But it could be a very cute neighborhood. It could be very nice. There is a place for smaller lots, not, not all lots are going to be five, six, seven, eight thousand square foot lots. I actually own a lot that's four thousand and, you know, before I came here and it works quite well for the family. So it just depends. I mean, everybody is looking for kind of a different feel, but I think it can work well, but it's really after they build the homes, like the people, how they manage the property, specifically the parking, the cars, so.
And that's something we can do through the planning commission though to, to structure it.
No, because it's going to be a ministerial building permit. And so now what ends up happening is a code enforcement issue. People start complaining because of the red curbs and if the cars are spilling over on the other side and taking their, their parking in front of the house, that's where you're going to get the complaints.
Yes, okay. Mr. Furman?
Yeah, I, I just think in all fairness, this has been vetted through the planning commission. It was interesting enough for staff to bring it to us, so I like to hear the vision of the applicant and move from there.
Yeah. Okay, anybody else? Okay. Thank you, Brian. You're welcome. With that, we'll open the public hearing. Can we hear from the applicant?
Sure. Can you hear me?
Yeah, if you could speak up just a little bit louder.
Yeah, thank you. Can you hear me? Is this good?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay, great. Yeah, so I appreciate the opportunity to present this and discuss this further. The, the goal is really to create affordable homes at a low cost, two-bedroom, three-bedroom homes that can be, you know, as affordable as possible. So the goal was really to create two different triplexes, if you will. You know, lot one, two, and three would be one and then four, five, and six would be another. And, you know, they, the way that we designed it, they had garages in them and they were actually single story only, but we could do two stories and do three bedrooms or, you know, there's a lot of different options. What we've proposed is we've asked for no variances. We've asked for no, nothing that is already, that's, that's not already by right. So lot sizes are according to code. We're not, they're not any smaller than what's allowed by code and we were just trying to create an opportunity to create as affordable housing as possible. And, and, you know, that was the original vision and if we decide to sell individual lots and let people build on them, that's, that's another thing, but, you know, you know, we, we were just hoping to be able to build, you know, what we can on that lots and, and as, as I mentioned, this density allows six point six homes. So we're proposing five, I mean, six. So, you know, I, I appreciate the concerns, we're, you know, but, you know, we're just trying to, we're just trying to create, you know, as affordable housing, options as possible.
Okay, so are you contemplating on building them possibly on your own or, or option? Are you separating it and we'll figure it out later? And could you introduce yourself too?
I, I think, yes. So I'm a general contractor. I'm a real estate broker. I've built in Indio in the past. I've built all in Southern California. We do small, small one to four units, done about fifty of them and mostly in Orange County, but, you know, some here and I just did one in Indio. So, you know, there's always options, you know. I, I'm not going to commit. The market makes, you know, dictates what, what's going to happen and what doesn't happen. So I'm not committing to anything, but certainly there are options. And when we originally presented this to the planning commission, we showed them, you know, where the layout would be, where the garage would be, what the setbacks are going to be and where the, the footprints of each home would be. And so, you know, that was our, that was our original intent when we first presented this.
Mr. Gutron, did you want something?
Yes, this is Benjamin Weethron, member of council. Can you please give us your name and can you please give us the location of where you build projects in Indio?
My name is Scott Ayers and I built one project at five zero eight one five Los Palos.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Any other questions, the applicant? Anybody have anything? Okay. Thank you, sir. Anything else you'd like to finalize for us?
No.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else wish to speak on this subject? Sabdi, anybody in queue? With that, then we'll close the public hearing and we'll talk among the council. What's your pleasure and what's your thoughts? Mayor Pretend?
I, these lots trouble me because they're so small. If it becomes something like a duplex, that works, but we don't have control over that. So he's going to, you know, these are being subdivided to, to sell. I just see the potential for challenges when you have a very dense neighborhood, very small pieces of property and lots of people living in them and garages being taken over. I, I see a lot of red flags, so this is very concerning to me.
Mr. Gutron?
The only example I can give that we've done very well, a project like this, is at the corner of King Street and Requa with Horizons, if I recall.
And those are.
And those are three really nice, small, but the families that moved in and under that city project with that partnership have turned out very well. And that's, in my opinion, is if we can duplicate that ten times over, we're not bringing just a, a home that was designed to be affordable, but is also sustained the time and they still look nice.
I couldn't agree more.
And it benefits also the need.
All right, so we got that. We have some concerns, Mr. Furman?
Yeah, I, I, I think this is an opportunity to explore alternative housing that we historically have here in Indio. You know, we, we talked about some of that missing middle housing. We don't know what the desire of the developer is at this time, but it opens a door for some of that. And I, I do take into consideration some of the concerns, parking in this area and downtown and some of our, our older traditional area, housing areas or residential areas, as I should say, do have some parking concerns. I don't know how we can regulate that down in the future. I know that apartment complexes can regulate that illegally. I don't know what we could do in this, you know, venture. However, we're not actually there yet. But if this does pass, but what I, what I will conclude with is I'd rather have a parking issue than a housing issue. And so I'll leave it there and as we move forward.
Yeah, and I, I recognize the concerns as well with the parking or overcrowding, but I think those are issues we have in almost every neighborhood at the moment, right? We see the overcrowding, we see the parking in, and, and the bigger the house, sometimes it just means more people are living there, right? And so I've seen that in gated communities, we've seen that in my neighborhood, my old neighborhood, my new neighborhood. And so I think it's just part of the larger housing issue that we have and bringing the smaller lots like these are going to be, bring more access to affordable homes for more families and, you know, more and more projects like this that bring those different options rather than just single family homes will help us address that overcrowding issue over the long term. That's my opinion.
Okay, so we got that. Brian, if you could come back up to the mic if you could, please. So what was the planning commission vote on this?
It was five oh. Yeah, well, they didn't, they didn't have any concerns. I think the main reason is they would have saw like a design review with a project, they might have kind of got into it a little more, but because it's just a land division, they didn't really get into those.
Because we have concerns, but we're really just dividing the land. That's what we're deciding now.
Yeah, it's, you know, any developed land.
So if we have a problem with the lots, then we can discuss it. So, so if not, somebody'd like to make a motion or we'd like to do more comment, whoever would like to.
I'll go ahead and move to approve resolution number ten five two two for the Ayers tentative tract map, number three nine one three zero and determination that the project is exempt from environmental review pursuant to SEQA guidelines section one five three three two.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
First by Councilmember Ortiz, second by Councilmember Furman. Please vote. After all that, passage unanimously, five zero. Good conversation. Good to hear that. You, you hear our concerns, Brian, so, you know, like the best we can do for.
Thank you, Mayor.
What we have and we'll leave it in our planning commission's hands with. Yes, sir.
No, just to say, just, I hope you understand where we're going. We want to bring the need, but we need quality. It needs to be effective, but it needs to serve the need. So it's, it's a balance, but I think we all have the same goal.
Yeah, it does help because when we present these items to the planning commission, we do bring up concerns that the council has. So actually, the, the next planning commission meeting, I'll be bringing up the point that the council made regarding checking in like maybe six months after the project is built. So we'll be working on that with the planning commission so that we can hopefully come up with, you know, adding condition to these permits that could do a little more monitoring to make sure things are looking good and that they're compliant with their permit. So I appreciate that.
Brian, we can, Brian, we, we do need to have another committee meeting with a joint session, the sustainability, the planning commission, again, when the Mayor Pro Tem becomes the mayor, it'll probably end up on her, her watch, but I think really if we're really talking about things like this, we want to see things going on. The planning commission really needs to tell us what they're looking at and why they're looking at it and we can tell them our goals and thoughts, so we can combine the two to make sure that we're, we're on the same page because, you know, I'd hate to have people invest in money doing things in Indio and then have the planning commission do it and then just override it because we're not listening to exactly where it is and have different thoughts because, you know, we need all kinds of development here, but I think that's good. The same with the city ability. How can we help them to be successful? What can we do to bring that into the fold in planning in our city to do things? So I think the more we get along in those joint sessions, the more we are able to have that one-on-one conversation instead of them having it on their own, just like the sustainability. They wanted guidance. What can you tell us that you want us to do? So I think that's good. I think it's a good conversation. So thank you for all your work.
You're welcome. Mr. Gutron?
Well, I just think that we have so much going on in Southern California that somebody's doing it better than we're at the level we want it. So it's always good to go on that one-day field trip and show them what they can bring to Indio.
I'd like to see the Dobie houses.
Yeah, so do I. So where they're doing it right and they've already gone through all the bundles and successes.
Take a trip to Ojai, right? Beautiful Ventura County. Beach, beach weather.
Exactly. Thank you, Brian. Thank you for all your work. And that will bring up public comments. Javier Enriquez from the South Coast Air Quality, thank you for coming, sir.
Yes, good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pretend, council members, council and staff. My name is Javier Enriquez. I'm a senior public affairs specialist for South Coast Air Quality Management District. On behalf of South Coast AQMD, I have the following two announcements. The first is South Coast AQMD excited to share that more than four hundred and seventeen million is now available through Invest Clean Program, which provides four major funding opportunities. First, the charging infrastructure program helps offset the cost of installing DC fast chargers for class four through eight vehicles. Eligible applicants include charging station developers, fleet operators, truck stops, and distribution centers. Second, the truck replacement program is a scrap and replace program to transition class eight diesel goods, movement trucks such as heavy haulers, box trucks, dump trucks, and refuse trucks into battery electric alternatives. Third, the battery electric cargo handling equipment program provides funding to replace diesel yard trucks or top handlers with battery electric models. Fleet owners at warehouses and freight facilities are encouraged to apply. Finally, the battery electric switcher locomotive program supports replacing diesel-fueled switcher locomotives with battery electric versions. Charging infrastructure for these locomotives is also eligible for funding. Application must be submitted online by twelve PM on November twenty eighth, twenty twenty five. For full details and instructions on how to apply, please visit Invest Clean webpage at AQMD forward slash Invest Clean. The second announcement is the Coachella Valley Dust Summit. AQMD is hosting the Dust Summit on Thursday, November sixth, in person and online at the UC Riverside Auditorium, Palm Desert Center, Palm Desert, California. And with that, I'll be, I will, I will be providing this information and link to the clerk and thank you, Mayor and Mayor Pro Tem, council members, for your time.
Thank you. And on the summit itself, is that going to be roundabout with locals here too and AQMD? I mean, is it on the dust that's been involved since Hurricane Hillary or what is it that the Dust Summit's about?
Yes, it is primarily for the dust created from the dust from the Hillary event and it's going to incorporate a lot of professionals, expertise in that field to include us from AQMD, speaking on the, the board there as well.
What, what time is that going to be at?
At six PM, a correction, five PM on November sixth.
Thank you. And you gave that information to the, to the clerk?
I will provide that information in late. Yes, sir.
Yeah, maybe, Brian, we can get that up on our website too for other people or businesses now, especially if they're giving away, not giving away, but granting funds to some of our businesses, like I see Mr. Brendan Vossen back. He could probably use some funding for some of his trucks. So we appreciate it. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Just have one question for you. The grants that you're talking about, the heavy commercial vehicles, where are they in place in Southern California now? Do you have a list of referrals? Because I'd be curious. Is it three-quarter ton trucks?
No, these are for heavy, heavy truck haulers and diesel trucks. So semi.
Semi trucks then?
Yes.
Where are they having in place right now in Southern California?
I don't know where they have it in place, but this is primarily for the corridor from the ports into the IE. Again, this to modernize, modernize, modernize this into clean, clean air vehicles.
Understood. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you, sir. Thank you for spending your time and coming to see us. With that, Gloria Franz, would you like to come up?
Good evening, Mayor, Madam Mayor Pretend and City Councilmembers and of course staff and lots of friends and people that I happen to know and Rod, he's here. I, thank you, Ben. I will report that the presentation was done and if you are not part of the Day of the Dead, please, please join us. It is a lot of fun and it is the museum's largest event. But on top of that, I did want to report that the museum has been going through a rebranding. We have a new logo, some of you may have noticed, so we're about to change everything. I wanted to share with you the story behind the logo. We did hire a branding company. Our three diamonds that we had before, they were nice, they were colorful, they were starting to be noticed, but there wasn't really a story behind them. So we wanted a logo that had a story. So the story around the logo is our job is to preserve, share the his, you know, preserve and share the history of the Coachella Valley and Indio and the surrounding areas. So what our logo now says is we are showing someone from the past, sharing knowledge with the future. And then we had to put a little plant in there because of course we have our gardens, right? And we're about to add to the gardens with the Garden and Railway Project that is moving forward. So I wanted to give you that update. Also, this summer, we went through a little bit of update on our Keweeya exhibit. So we did that in conjunction with, of course, the Keweeya tribe and so we are, feel really comfortable with the new exhibit. Please come by and see it. During that project, we decided to take up some carpet that had seen better days in the just shy of a hundred-year-old adobe home. Guess what we found underneath? Beautiful wood floors that somebody had covered. So we were able to pull the carpets, have those restored. So when you go see the exhibit, please don't forget to look down because the floors are actually pretty nice. So I just wanted to give you guys an update. We are open. We are looking to have more events. Our English tea parties are on the calendar for February seventh. For those of you who plan out six, seven, eight months ahead of schedule, you can do that. And I'm looking forward to seeing you all at the state of, of the city, looking forward to seeing that and seeing you at Day of the Dead. If you have any questions about the museum, I'm here. If not, thank you for your continued support.
Give them a note, give them a note date on our infamous rail car.
Oh, the inf, yeah, is it infamous, famous? So the rail car project, which has been going on for quite a while, this last year, we were able to, we went out, we hired a interior designer. And the reason is, we kinda, the car had two things it needed to do. One, it needs to allow us to share and tell the stories of Southern Pacific Railroad and what the rail really meant to the Coachella Valley and where we were and where we are. That was job one. Job two was that we wanted it to be a unique venue space where people could create their memories in the car. So, we needed it to be usable in today's world on, and tell the story. So, we hired a designer and she's in the process of working out all the details and has not authorized me to give you all the details. But the nice thing is instead of being a replica of one car, because there were three different Sunset Limited cars, we're going to have a little bit of all three cars within the car. And it's being designed to be elegant and modern and user-friendly. We're in the middle of talking to a local AV company. All the windows facing north will actually be LED screens. Um, there will be lighting, there will be, it'll be like the future and the past collided. It's going to be like nothing that we have anywhere in the Coachella Valley or anywhere in Southern California that I am aware of. So, uh, my goal is that in the future, there will be a one-year waiting list to have your party at the train car. We will also be adding an outdoor, um, um, area for seating. So, the entire project will be able to have a hundred and twenty people for a sit-down dinner. So, you could have your really good friends in the car, since there's only forty seats in there, and everybody else can sit outside. Uh, but it's gonna be very cool, of course, surrounded by the gardens and all the other pieces of the project. But I think by, by next year, we're going to really go out and start to do the big fundraising that it's gonna require to get this project done. But it's gonna be another great add to downtown Indio along with everything else.
No, just the gardens to emphasize the hard work of the museum and the privilege of working with our water authority. They'll all be desert native plants, so the public can go there and look at the plants, Oscar, and see what they can put at their homes that will survive the hundred and twenty degree heat. And there'll be a small ticket booth that will resemble ticket booth, but inside will give the history of the rail for Indio.
Very nice.
It's, it's gonna be something more than we ever dreamed. The project keeps getting bigger and better. And yes, we are going to promote drought-tolerant, beautiful gardens. That's the whole story.
Mr. Furman?
Gloria, when are your board meetings?
We meet the second Monday of the month, so we just met, um, at four thirty. We do Zoom and in-person, depending on how everybody can be. Um, and then the executive committee meets the fourth Tuesday, so every two weeks.
I, I just wanted to let the public know, if you haven't been to our, uh, History Museum, I mean, it's, it's a wonderful place to go and I hope they expand.
Yeah.
They have a lot of things in their archive and, um, you know, I, I was very shocked going into the back and I seen a, a small exhibit from Eagle Mountain. And that's how my family actually came to California and the Coachella Valley. And, um, also, there's a lot of archives of the African-American community here in the city of Indio. So, I, I, outside of the city, I love to collaborate with the History Museum on some of those efforts, so thank you for what you're doing.
You're welcome.
Preserving our legacy.
And just so you know, the archives, most people don't know we even have them, but we do get calls from university students from all over, you know, wanting information about the desert. And we have all of those records. So, they come in, you know, we use volunteers, we scan, we digitize, there's all that backside of the museum that most people don't see. Um, but i- it's literally invaluable. None of the other museums have the depth of archives that we have, um, at the Coachella Valley History Museum. So, thank you for reminding me about the archives.
I think, I think Wayman beat me to it, but if you're ever gonna expand to bring that archives out and have other exhibits that people would like to use, I mean, we have some really, Golden Voice is a prime example. We have the Boxing Museum that wants to come.
Yeah.
I mean, you're gonna have to take some more property before we do it and would have to go to the backside, it would have to go north on the other side of the gate in between.
I've got a solution, but I should probably save it and talk to the city manager.
But we'll talk about it, yeah, talk to the city manager. But I hate to see those archives of our histories, like, like Mr. Furman said, sitting there.
They sit there.
Uh, because I'm afraid that they're gonna get d- ruined or damaged before they actually get into the cases they need to be, to be preserved forever. I know you do a great job, but still, you're limited to what you can do.
We do preserve them to what we call museum standards. So, boxes are, you know, acid-protected, things are wrapped, things are not a lot of lighting. You know, we try to do the best we can with our limited resources, because we do understand that once some of those items are gone, they're not replaceable, right? So, but yeah, but don't worry, we'll have more coming.
The real exciting part is history if what it looks like have found where Amelia Earhart was at.
Oh, yeah.
Our city and our community and thanks to Jackie Cochran, we have a very strong base of information. By the way, their banners are up in the city as veterans.
Yep, very nice. I think your three minutes is up.
It is. Thank you very much and I'm gonna go to take my nap now.
Yeah, we did. You got our time. Rod, I mean, you, you've been there the whole time, would you like to come up and say a few words about Buzz Box or what you're doing and that? I mean, you're back there, you've been sitting here for the last, oh, two and a half hours? I gave you a chance.
You're just buzzing with smiles.
I mean, I, I have cocktails are waiting inside.
Anyway, Mayor, Mayor Pretend, council, Rod Van Nuys of Buzz Box, thank you. I, what I really want to say is just kinda echo two things. I was here, obviously, to support the presentation with our new chamber concept, um, and we've been working for a long time as city owners and business owners and doing what we can to help the economic development of the city. So, we're very excited what's going on and thank you for the council for your support, obviously, and leadership and Brian and the team. And, um, most recently to the city of Indio for their assistance with some of the things we've had happen at our facility, which are not crime-related, but, uh, we thank you.